Good evening. I'd like to call this September 13th meeting of the Willetts City Council to order. We'll start with the pledge to the flag. Mr. Almeida, will you lead us?
And our member. We pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united up, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dolores, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Ms. Rubius?
Present.
Stransky?
Present.
Yes, thank you. All right, we're going to start out with public communications. The city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council. To expedite matters and avoid repetition, whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, I may request the group appoint a spokesperson. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on tonight's posted agenda. Public criticism of the council, its commissions, boards, and agencies is not prohibited. The city council can take no action on non-agendized items. Is there anyone tonight who would like to speak to a non-agendized item?
I am.
Great. Please identify yourself at the podium.
Hi, I'm Amy Grumes and I live over on West Oak Street and I sent an email in for the record of my neighbor that is wanting to add to his large property and take his part of the alley behind our house along with all of the neighbors. And I did not get my form, my abatement form, sent to me. Four neighbors have received theirs. I did do a petition to ask, you know, are you, all the people that were opposed to it, sign my petition. I sent that in. I have one more to give to you. So I guess my thing is, I'm just commenting about the process. The person that is filling out the application to take the alley also is the one sending out notice the forms to get feedback back. And then it would go to a public meeting. And so we would assume that our forms are filled out correctly and given to you in the form that we gave them. So mine is about the process, that should the applicant that will do anything to get that property, should they be the ones collecting the forms and turning it in and we assume our voice is heard on the form? So, and then, because we're assuming that when there's a public meeting, that you've heard our opinion on the form. So I propose that you make an amendment to that and you change the part where it's up to the applicant and then you put in there that the fine, or not the fine, the deposit would be raised to account for someone mailing those letters, collecting those letters, and holding on to them to make sure every property owner turns them in and you have it from the property owner and not just assume that what you're giving is the one that I gave. So that's something to think about. And then I've had a lot of dishonesty from my neighbor and a push to take this alley that we use and neighbors use for supplying their wood, having access to their property as to why we bought the properties, because we had access to our property. Fire, emergency situations that we don't know that could come about, that we might need that lane. My husband's big Peterbilt truck can fit down there. Then we have a lot of equipment across the street that could possibly fit over there if we needed help behind our homes. It is our access, it is not abandoned, we use it all the time. Just because one perception says it's abandoned, doesn't mean it's abandoned. How many opposing neighbors would need to speak out to be able to, how many do we need? Is it one? Is it half? Is it more than half? Because I have more than half of the neighbors that abut the property or adjacent to the property do not want this to happen. And I did a petition in 2020 and I had to do it again on my Labor Day. I spent the day walking around talking to every neighbor so that I knew that our voices would be heard. And I just, when there's dishonesty, I think that we could have dishonesty, not assuming it could happen, you know, not saying that that person would do that, but I've had dishonesty and his fence will be moved on the 18th of September without following the process. So I am, I don't want to have to get a petition again. It's exhausting. And I'm hoping that you're listening, that we want to keep an alley and we just, if someone wants more property, buy some property somewhere else. Quit taking our access away, right, or wanting to take our access away. I don't know what else to say about it, but I do have one more signature to add and that's 13. And there's 24 people and I didn't reach everybody because a lot of them are rentals or there's a couple that are rentals and it is what it, it's very important to my husband and I to be able to get to our back for property.
Thank you. Would you like to come to the podium?
No, I'm really?
If you're going to speak, you have to come to the podium. The camera needs to be able to pick you up. And please state your name for the record.
My name is Omaya Sizman and I didn't really want to bring this issue up tonight. I have also the alley that's behind my store and nobody approached me to sign. She never came to get my signature, so I can attest to that. For actually getting our property back, because it belongs to us anyway and the alley's hardly utilized, it's basically a fire hazard. My husband just recently, somebody keeps putting a lock on the gate. I don't know who's doing it. He just went and actually loaded the whole bath. So anyway, this is a big issue and I do have some of the applications onto who she's referring to that's already getting part of the alley. I am starting my application process and there are some things on there that I'd like to change as well that I'm not too happy with because I feel that property already belongs to the existing landowners and the city just needs to relinquish it and for us to put our boundary lines back. We already paid taxes for this property and we don't even have access, we have access to it, but also there's more transients that use it. I've had fires started back there. We, I found needles back there. Nobody, sometimes the city's too busy to cut the grass, maybe they come out once, twice a year if that, so we have to maintain it ourselves. The trees are overgrown, my husband had to trim the trees down. So it's really a liability for the city because the city doesn't have time to maintain it and if a fire happens, the city's responsible. And also just to let you know, that was built early on for, I guess, the fire trucks to go behind the houses and now the fire trucks are so big, they can't even make that truck to go down the alley. Try sending a fire truck back there. They access the houses in the front. So it's basically just used for several people who have, one person, he has so many cars and trucks in front of his house, he can't access his backyard. So he's using the alley to get to his backyard because he just overloaded his front yard, he can't even get to the back. And I'm sure the city knows who I'm talking about. But anyway, there are more people against it than for it. I am sorry, what she's referring to, it's not correct because we've gotten more signatures that are against it. And I feel if I'm paying property taxes, I should have the right to that land and I should be able to move my fence back. And I don't even know why we have to pay the $2,500 application fee to do that. Anyway, this was something that I wasn't going to talk about tonight. I'm totally unprepared, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else tonight? Mr. Walker?
Well, once again, I'm hijacked. I came down here for what I was going to discuss and now I'm sent into another situation. So the alley that's behind my house, 55 West Oak, is actually West Barber Lane. It went through the old Ronstexco right there at the corner and right behind Chevron and down to east. Now, that's supposedly been, took care by the city or somebody, so I don't know where the names have changed. They came up with some oak project where they can do housing. Well, I don't keep up with all that, but yeah, the last time I seen the alley properly maintained easement-wise was when the Department of California sent the com through in there and they cleaned it out. The last time was just, oh, middle of summer, they had, he said he was from the city, had a little John Deere tractor and a brush hog behind him and just kind of went down the valley and back up and just really, all he did was made a trail. So, I mean, if you're gonna, we have to know what the city's intentions are. Either you're gonna maintain the alley as an easement and say, we have to use this because of these facts and properly maintain it according to whatever the code is, county or whoever, because I'm sure they got easements. So it has to be done right and if you're gonna turn it loose, then somebody that bought a piece of property planning on having that access to the back means you're gonna restrict the value of their property because you're denying them that access to the property. So they should have been notified of that before they built it, that this is an easement that can go away at any time. So whenever you build here, you need to be thinking of the fact this might go away. So the city didn't make that perfectly clear, maybe it's time to look at that as a legal issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight to speak to a non-agendized item?
Can I just ask a question? Procedurally, is this issue going to come to the council at some future time?
Dusty, was an application fully, formally submitted? I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, so the city received an application last week and we reviewed it, there's some items missing and we're preparing an incomplete letter to the applicant letting him know as such. There's been a process that's been recently established by the city if any individual wants to suggest or have the council consider abandoning a city right away or alley in this situation. Part of the application requires the individual that's interested to notify all those that also abut to or have access to the alley. And again, the purpose is to just let them know that they're seeking such a request from the city. And of course, when the city will, the staff will evaluate that and then there'll be a public hearing with the city council and the city will also notify all the appropriate neighbors of the public hearing.
So to clarify, just because an applicant asks to start the process for relinquishment, it doesn't mean that that automatically triggers that and suddenly that person gets their wish, correct?
Absolutely not. It formally has to be approved by the city council.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to public matters and this evening we have our county supervisor, Mr. John Hashcheck.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Connie and all the city council. So, you know, the big talk is about the deficit that the county has, the imbalance. So this, to balance the budget this year, we needed to use $7 million of one-time own funds and that's not a good way to be. And the projection is if we were to keep status quo, it would be about $10 million for next year. And so, so the county's been looking at a lot of things and what I wanted to talk about tonight was the facilities that we have in Willets because we're looking at trying to shrink the footprint of the county buildings because we haven't been able to maintain them as, as well as they should be maintained. And so, so we were, we're looking at the WISK building and especially maybe leasing, doing something with the building to the north and west and it's set apart from the larger building to the east of the sheriff's substation. That building, we're looking at doing something. And then, you know, we moved the cannabis department from here, from the Justice Center, back to Ukiah, to the planning and building because we thought it was a little more efficient with the downsizing of the cannabis program. And I think that Eisen Locatelli, who's the parole officer, is going to be doing probation, is going to be doing his, he's going to have staff up there for probation and also the social services will be using some of the space up there at times. And then we're also looking at the veteran hall and of course, we have a commitment to the veterans that they always have a place to, to have their meetings and so that will not be infringed on. But when I was in the county office today for our meeting, that there was an advertisement on the county website or whatever gets published up there on the big screen about renting the veterans' hall. So if, you know, that is one option if people want to rent it for special occasions or whatever, then, so we're looking at all those kind of ways of kind of decreasing the footprint of the county and also, you know, getting some revenue if possible, making it accessible to the, to the county or to the community. So if there's any questions about that or anything else with the county?
Yeah, I do have a question. I was, I had the impression that we were possibly in some kind of conversation about the county. We've expressed over the last several years some interest in the Justice Center. Is there a desire to sell that property?
Well, I, I was just talking to Mr. Bender before the meeting. I think there have been some conversations going on between the executive office and your city manager.
So there'll be more to come on that issue?
Right.
Okay. In a similar vein, I'm interested if similar conversations are happening regarding the museum building. The museum has been on the chopping block at the Board of Supervisors budgets for the last few years and Willetts residents feel pretty strongly about the museum. Is there any possibility of the county looking to sell that?
That's a difficult one because we have the building itself, we have the land which is owned by the city, right? The building and roots and then we have all the artifacts of the museum. And so we're looking at if there are options for who kind of manages the building itself or some of those kind of options. But my commitment is to keep the museum open and certainly you can't just close the museum. So we're trying to keep the museum open at all costs. We're just exploring options of different, you know, can there be a foundation or something that takes control of the building itself?
Okay. Thank you.
And those are very preliminary thoughts.
Any other questions for John?
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
And just one last comment is that yesterday at the board meeting, the board passed a proclamation which I put forward, making September 23rd Nicole Mann Day. And Nicole Mann is a member of the Round Valley Indian tribes and she's the first Native American astronaut and she went up to the space station. She's living in Houston right now, but she will be back in Mendocino County at, at the Indian Days in Comalow on September 23rd. So it's a great honor to have a person of that magnitude that accomplished.
She'll be a guest speaker, is that correct?
Right.
Yes, and we can all attend if you'd like.
Everyone can attend.
Hear her speech, I'm sure it'll be inspirational.
Right, yeah, so she's quite an inspiration to all of us.
Thank you. I feel like we just got good in welfare early.
We didn't know good news.
All right, we have no ordinances to enact this evening, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. The city council considers matters listed under the consent calendar as routine and can take action with a single motion and roll call vote. The item up tonight is city council minutes from our August 23rd meeting. Any comments or questions from council members regarding those minutes?
I'd like to move passage to the consent.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I'll open it up. Does the public have any comments about the minutes from the August 23rd meeting? No? Okay, thank you. Dolores, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Ms. Rubius?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Involved?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, thank you. No monthly activity reports, so no commissions, agencies, or authority reports, so we'll move on to our city manager reports and recommendations.
Okay, Madam Mayor. The first item tonight is a resolution that is in support of a non-binding MOU between the city of Willets and the Sherwood Valley Band of Pomo Indians regarding potential for water supply as we move forward in a process to look at options as the tribe moves, looks at their own feasibility for development in the valley at their existing site and a proposed site. What we're looking at here is, and I want to really emphasize, it's non-binding and this is not, I'm jumping ahead because we have talked about this several, I'm just trying to hit the notes that the council has raised at previous conversations. We do have Andrew Ramos online virtually. He is an attorney that the city has retained for water rights consultation. He's very familiar with the reservoirs, our water system, our distribution system, and the water rights associated with it. We do have Josh here in the audience. He is representing the tribe and can answer questions. So once again, this is a non-binding MOU that basically allows the tribe, Sherwood Valley, to seek out funding through their partners to look at the feasibility of supplying water at a later date. And hopefully, in that process, we can leverage some of that funding opportunity to look at, answer some of the questions we have from our side of the equation on the physical capacity, our even feasibility to deliver the services intended for water, and also what the, what does the request do for our existing infrastructure up at the reservoirs and the watershed? I know that the council, at the last time this was presented, had several questions. The agenda summary addresses those, but staff is available to answer the questions or anything else that you may have.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from council members?
I have one. I had taken a turn originally. I was undecided and didn't want to vote on the matter. At the last time we discussed the matter, I stated that I would vote in favor and then after further conversation, I still hold to that, except that there has been some concern expressed about the possibility of there being a casino and the intent is for housing. And I talked to a couple of people that were knowledgeable in, on this matter and it would be extremely difficult, as I understand it, for there to be a casino, but I still would like, if I'm going to vote yes on this, that somewhere in their memorandum of understanding would be that it would be used exclusively for housing or parks and housing. I'm okay with that. I don't want it to be used for gaming. Those are just my thoughts.
Thank you. Any other council member comments or questions?
I guess a question maybe for Andrew or Jim. Is that something that as we move forward with something like this, that we could put in, in any subsequent discussions? That's something that could be put on the table then? Because I mean, I support the housing and the project that was proposed.
Initially, that's what we're looking at, is housing. We've had no discussion.
Josh, can we have you come up here so the camera can get you and introduce yourself if you would?
Josh Kevir, I am the tribal administrator for Sherwood Valley Band of Pomo Indians. Our discussion has only been about housing. We have no plans at all of moving casino for that property. Our plan right now is where it is now. I'm not sure if there's some type of expansion, but there's no plans at all.
So I understand that there are no plans now, but I'm worried and want to be cautious in making sure that two decades from now, when I don't sit in this seat that I, that I put in place, that my vote today was in support of housing. So that's why, even though that's not your intent, that would be the purpose of me feeling the need to include that.
Yeah, yeah, certainly, I completely understand. And I think that we actually proceeded further than just the non-binding MOU, that the MOA, that we got to that point, would have that in there and be descriptive of what that agreement is between the city and the tribe.
And just for anyone out there, MOU is memorandum of understanding, MOA memorandum of agreement, so we're not at that point yet, but.
Yes, yes. Yeah, this is, this is just, allows us to be able to, when we do our feasibility, we're looking at applying for a high-tech program which is low-income housing tax credits. So 20-unit with a multi-use facility, also park. So this allows us to, for the infrastructure part, what are our options? What would those costs be? So this, if it could be one of our options, we could have that when we're doing our feasibility. Is that the route we go? Do we go into just doing our own water? That, as you guys know, is extremely expensive, so yeah, that's, that's our intent at this point.
Now, it sounds like your geological survey shows that there isn't any water.
Yeah, there's, there's some, but maybe not as much as we'd like.
Not enough to sustain the proposed one?
Right, right. I think we're showing eight gallons.
Hydrologically, it's generally not geological.
So certainly not, you know, as much as we'd like.
Any other questions from council?
Oh, I have mixed feelings about this in that, but I think what is really important is stressing that it's non-binding and it doesn't put a foot in the door that we are making any obligation to in fact go to the next step that might come down and actually supply the water. So we, the city, will want to look really closely at not just the feasibility to a near site, but from our side. Is it really in our interest? Does it pencil out financially? Does it in any way cut off our options for serving our existing customers and residential expansion that was planned in the city? So I just want it to be clear to the public and to the tribes that this is not a, you know, it's not an agreement to go forward after the studies. We need to find out what those factors are and then we have to look at it from our perspective and what makes sense to the community. But I, but I agree also that, you know, serving residential usage in our valley is a potentially desirable outcome in that we do need housing. And so that part of it, you know, without weighing all the other factors, is something that I would want to look at.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Stransky?
I might, we'll just get out with mine, I'm not for it at all. And I think that once we open up our city water to waters that from someplace else, I mean, we're not going to get any tax revenue or anything else from, from your existence out there. And the county will, Mr. Hashcheck, will, will get a little bit out of it, but the city will not get anything out of it. And I just think that once you open the door, that you've opened the door not only for you, but for a lot of other people. And so I'm just telling you right up front, I'm not for it. Thank you.
Okay, if council has no more questions, I'm going to open it up to the public to hear if anyone out there has questions, concerns, or comments about this item. Mr. Walker?
Oh.
Mr. Almeida, will you let Mr. Walker first?
Sure.
I'll start his hand first. Thank you, Josh. Maybe have you come back up there with questions to the public.
So the only thing, oh, Mark Walker, so the only thing I have to question was at one meeting I sat in on, there was a feasibility study about the flow, the quantity of water we're going to have in the valley and the fact that we don't want to leach our wells too dry and get arsenic poisoning and a bunch of other problems. So I think the city should take a good look at that because if that's water you're saying, you're only going to have a big pool of water, so. And so if you've got too many people in a hard year, it's going to put a big strain on things. So that might strain the people here that are paying you in the city. So we really need to protect the city's interest as far as it's people that live here and pay their taxes. So that's all I'm concerned about. When I hear this, the first thing I thought about is that, you know, what's that supposed to happen, a feasibility study for the water flow?
So just to clarify, can I clarify?
Yes, sure.
So to clarify- So, to clarify, the arsenic and water drawdowns were concerns regarding groundwater use. And what this proposal is, is to tie into our municipal water system, our distribution system, which draws from the reservoirs. So, that would be surface water. So, what we're looking at exploring is whether or not there's enough there to provide tie-ins outside of city limits, outside of our jurisdiction, to their facilities.
Right. So, then I would raise my question is, at this point, what is the ratio that the city's depending on the reservoir? Or are they just pumping out of the ground saying, we've got all kinds of water, don't worry about the reservoir?
Right.
I mean, are we just, you know, chopping our toes off to spite? That kind of thing.
Certainly everyone's concerned.
Just supplies.
Thank you. Mr. Alameda.
John Alameda, Mendocino County resident, Willets Valley. My concern is that, a lot like Councilman Stransky, once you open the door, you've got others that might want to start tapping into water. And I understand Brook Trails wants to come down in this valley and develop wells. And if you're using your water from the reservoirs and it starts getting low, you're going to have to depend on your wells more, and that could affect my well, and that concerns me. And then, the other thought is that Fish and Game, or no, it was, I don't know what the party was last year that came in here and was asking for some flows to go down the creeks.
Traveler, not over the limit.
And now, I read something the other day about they're going to look at some, I don't know if it's the same group or another group, but there's a group looking at, we're not releasing enough into the creeks right now. And I don't know if that's, if we told them no, and now they're going another direction to try to get those flows anyway. And I don't think that's a good thing. And then, if you add, I'm not against 20 houses at the reservation, but I'm against what it could develop into. Especially, if we got the government agencies trying to make us release flow for fish, unfor people. I like fish, but you know, people, we've got to live, and we've got to, we're in drought here. We might have had one good winter last year, but we're in droughts most of the time nowadays. We didn't have a drought my whole life, until 1976. Seventy-six and seventy-seven, seventy-seven was really bad. It's worse than what we've had now. But we're having year after year of it until this last winter, which multiplies the effect. So, be careful with your water, because it could affect my well, it could affect everybody else that lives in this valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, the feasibility study is, again, not only so that the tribe can decide whether it's worth it for them, from getting the water, applying for it, or digging wells, or whatever they need to do, if that turns out to be better for them, but also, it's whether we get to ask questions on the city, some of those questions some of you have posed, we get to ask those hard questions too, as part of the study, as part, so it helps fund that study. It may come back to that, they, it's not a done deal because we can't supply it or whatever. That could come back as a result of this. So, that's why.
Good evening, Council. Tamara Allaney, City of Willets resident. I'm very interested in this item. I think that some of the things that the public is concerned about are exactly what this feasibility study can give us information on. We have some interaction between what comes out of the reservoirs and how that impacts the groundwater. We have our fish flows, so we want to look at where's the water available so that we can meet our fish flows and what we already have to deliver in town. And then, there's the ability to potentially help out a neighbor. And I think what I've seen in my professional water world is that if you don't take these opportunities to potentially develop cooperative agreements and voluntary agreements with somebody in the valley, the state could come in and say, you have to do it. At this point in the process, you're able to get your questions answered, kind of get your terms met, and potentially have a really good situation for both the city and the tribal neighbors in the valley.
Thank you.
The last three public comments were actually spot-on. There are concerns about, our system is essentially moving towards an interconnected system between groundwater and the surface production facility, the reservoirs. We're looking at the ability to, you know, making sure, as we move forward, that we're not promising or over-promising our capacity, our production capacity, and then, oh, we have to tap into the groundwater system to supply this end of the system. So, that's one of the questions that needs to be addressed as we potentially move forward. Second item is, there are concerns about our obligations to the state for biologic functionality of the creek, outlet creek. That's something that needs to be addressed. And full disclosure, we're aware of it. We're currently not meeting our obligation, but that's something we need to look at and potentially, if the tribe can leverage funds and that we can tap into it to do, to renegotiate with the state what we need to do, that's a good thing as well. And then, finally, there was comments about the ground flow, the ground flow model that the council approved the concept of, that has started in earnest during a scoping session. And literally, this, this afternoon, I received in my inbox the proposal for the groundwater quality that the council asked. That was delayed a little bit because the principals who are involved with the project, rescheduling and whatnot, but we finally got a proposal, and I'd like to bring that to the council on the 27th. So, the point I'm trying to make is, everything is interconnected, and we would like to develop this relationship with the tribe and with them. They have access to some good funding sources that we don't have access to. And if we can partner up with them, there's opportunities that we can, like I said, use some of that funding to look at, address some of these questions that are coming up in this whole process. And final comment, at any time, the council may receive recommendation from staff to stop this process for any number of reasons, or staff may respond to requests from the council to stop the process as well. Like we said, it's non-binding, there's no obligation, we're not going to be held to something. There are some concerns as we move forward, but only way we can explore the feasibility is that we take this first step.
The only way to explore is to explore.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else from the guests, please?
My name is Big Bull Caldwell, citizen of Willets, and I have a question about that. You say you're going to do about 15 to 20 units?
Yes.
I believe it was the last council meeting where RCA C is talking about the complex on the beginning of town, where they also want to put in like 10, 15, 20 units. So, you know, and this is going to be down the road as well. If I remember right, they said they would start building end of '24, beginning of '25. So, just, you know, here is a group of 20, 20 units, 25 units, whatever, and then there is one as well. So, that will, again, be more watered as we need it for low-income, special needs, and seniors. Just putting that on the scale.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any further questions? Okay, I'm going to bring it back up to the dais, and I will enter a motion unless council have further questions.
You know what? I will go ahead and move as this is non-binding staff recommendation.
All right. Twelve seconds motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second.
With the understanding that as we move forward, if, council member?
I agree.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so a motion in a second to approve a non-binding MOU with the caveat that, do we move into an MOA-type situation, we will limit usage to housing, park developments, and no commercial developments? All right, we have a rule call, please. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Gonzalez, yes.
Rodriguez?
No.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for being here and answering.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, everyone in the public, for your comments and questions as well. All right, Brian, I believe you have an introduction to make.
Hey, just breaking down, here goes. Okay. I am at the stage here, as we move forward with the police department, to introduce James Connor as the interim police chief for the City of Willets. He accepted operational control last week. He's been doing essentially assessments of our operations, staffing, procedures, protocols, and communicating back with the rest of the administration staff regarding financing, budgeting, HR, and myself. So, James has been helping us, guide us through this transition period. He's been bringing in a lot of expertise. He's been working the phones, working his rolodex of contacts throughout the Mendocino and Sonoma County areas. And I'm pleased to have him on board and help us through this whole process. So, James, would like to introduce himself in several words.
Certainly. Madam Mayor, Council. My name is James Connor. As Mr. Bender said, interim police chief here at the Department of Willets. I come to you with many years of experience in law enforcement, law enforcement leadership. And what I can tell you in my short time here is that you have some wonderful, very dedicated employees. And I'm very optimistic about the condition of the department and the future for us. So, thank you very much for having me. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve and help, if I can be of service or help to you or on the state any, please feel free to reach out and ask how I can. Anyway, it really is very nice to meet you all. And with a very sincere and heartfelt offer, if I can be of assistance, please let me know.
Thank you, Chief.
I wanted to just ask, for the benefit of the public, just a little bit about your background and with a special look at how you connect to this region, this community.
So, my experience in Willets really was kind of an annual thing. When the campground outside of town was a KOA, every summer, we would bring our kids and do a family camp at the KOA. So, I have a little bit of interaction in being here. But what drew me to this opportunity to help is that I, I have a burden on my heart for small police agencies. I had a career in a small agency, I had a career leading a small agency. So, I know, I know the specific and unique problems that small agencies face that maybe even size of large agencies don't face. Looking for leadership in a smaller community, particularly with a smaller police department, that is a whole separate challenge and set of skills that's necessary. So, when, when I became aware that the city was looking for assistance, it came at a time, all right, I was renovating my house, and I had just, I had just finished a renovation project, and at, right at that moment, when your need came up, I thought, this seems like a really good opportunity to serve and help. And so, that's what drew me out of my golf and pickleball schedule.
Thank you.
Most certainly. Most certainly. And really, honestly, the ability to serve in a small community and to have an opportunity to help not just growing a department, but helping to pick people that fit with the community and to fit into a small department culture, and hopefully choosing people that are dedicated to the unique opportunities that a small-town police department have. I've been having this conversation with folks all week long. I don't have a violent crimes detective bureau. I don't have a helicopter unit. I don't have a gang task force. And the reality is, a lot of people coming into the business have grown up on cop shows, and that's really what they get into law enforcement for, and that's really what they want to do. And so, a problem for small agencies is that we find good-quality applicants, and we hire them, and we spend a year sending them to the police academy and training them in the build training program. And then, by the time they finish that, they've been on for a year, and then they're a solo patrol officer for six months, and they get a post-basic certificate that says, I can go get hired anywhere as a police officer, and they leave because there's bigger opportunities and bigger money. Well, then, we're back in the same boat, and we're short again, and the short staff there is another one to one and a half years' process to replace. So, my philosophy is finding the right people who are interested and dedicated in serving in a small agency, because the benefits of the things that we have, we don't have a violent crimes detective bureau, but if there is a violent crime that occurs on your shift, guess who it is? So, you gain experience quicker, and you gain a broader breadth of experience as what we refer to as a generalist police officer. So, there really are many, many benefits to working in a smaller agency, and that's just where we need to focus our recruitment, in building a department that hopefully is more resilient. So, that's my goal, and that's my plan.
Thank you.
By the way, I'll keep talking literally all night long. So, I'll take that as exit stage, right? But again, please, if you have any questions, if you have some concerns, some thoughts, feel free. I care about myself while my wife is still at home, so I have nothing better to do than be at the station, anyway. So, you can probably reach me at a lot.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. One of James's attributes, as we went through candidates, is that he was more than willing to spend upwards of six or seven months in this transition. And he knew it was going to be a long-lasting transition. We are starting the process for the recruitment of a permanent chief, but we know that is difficult, the time-consuming. James was willing to commit the time that this community and this organization needs and that this council expects. So, I appreciate that, his commitment and his willingness to put the time in.
Thank you.
I don't know if I have no health after when I got here. Any questions?
Yeah, it's up at the hangar. It's Black Hawk, we're all set.
Anything else, Brian, under your three?
I do, I do have, and this may be a tag-team effort with Dusty Dooley, I just wanted to take a quick moment to brief the council on the pending hometown, or excuse me, the Harvest Moon Celebration that is scheduled for September 30th. And once again, there's going to be a street closure on a portion of Main Street, similar to what took place during the hometown celebration. We learned our lessons from that first episode. We're getting better at this, and that's why I wanted to present to the council that we, as a staff here, as an organization, would encourage street closures for various events. We don't have a special events ordinance or policy in place yet on the books, but we are working with applicants. And right now, the main applicant for this proposal is the Chamber of Commerce, and they've been very great to work with. They've brought a lot of stakeholders and a lot of interested parties to help facilitate this process. We learned, like I said, we learned from our miscues and missteps from the hometown celebration. We're learning, we've got a little bit of a traffic control plan in place. Service and Facilities has ordered additional signs. We have our second variable sign message unit that goes on a trailer or is on a trailer, so we can put messages on those and almost adjust them on the fly in case we need to reroute traffic or put a special message out there. This episode is putting a lot of, we're pulling a lot of people together. The Chamber, like I said, has been very good at identifying stakeholders. Taylor Crand Perry up in the Community Development Department under Dusty's leadership has been taking the lead on this, has been facilitating, and she has been managing the requests. So, is there any questions, anything Dusty could add?
No, I'll just add that I'm glad that the city is cosponsoring and assisting with the event. There's a lot that can go into even these little events like this. And, you know, one of the things that we're throwing out is we've provided notification to all property owners within 650 feet of Main Street notifying them of the road closure. And the Chamber is going to hand-deliver letters to local businesses, so hopefully no one's going to be caught off-guard. And again, that was one of the big benefits of us taking over Main Street was the opportunity to take advantage of it and throw some good fun parties for the community. So, something that's consistent with a number of our planning documents.
Dusty, at the last event, the Maiden Voyage, there were some concerns that MTA had not been notified and that they were having to reroute at the last moment. Is that one of the concerns that we've addressed for this time around?
Yeah, my understanding is MTA has been notified.
Thank you.
And we also stepped up the effort on trash collection, trash management. That was something that was identified. Staffing, the detour hardpoints was also addressed. That's going back to signage and bringing in additional partners. And just kind of the flow of, you know, what transpired. There was a few little hiccups along the way there. We were working with the Chamber to address those, but we're getting better at it. And hopefully, this is going to be a great celebration, a great event, and we encourage everyone to participate.
Thank you.
Can I ask a qualifying or clarifying question?
Yes.
Is there a way to get him a microphone for the camera? Are you able to do that? That'd be great. Thank you. And just identify yourself for the record if you would.
Trying to guess what's next. My name is Robin Smith. And I just have a question. You said September 30th? And where is it going to be, like, where's it going to start to close at? My wedding is on September 30th at the Little Lake Range. And so, they're coming from Ridgewood Ranch to the Little Lake Range. So, I just wanted to know, I just wanted to be prepared on where to tell them to go.
What time is your...
So, they'll probably be coming around like 5:00, 6:00.
Oh, we can't wait 20.
Yeah.
Contact Dusty. We're going to have to make some allowances here.
Okay.
We don't want to ruin your parade or your event.
Congratulations. Thank you.
We're going to need to commentate you.
Okay, thank you very much.
By the way, this is like part of that better or worse thing you can just cut.
Hopefully, it's not a sign. It's, we're closing Main Street from its intersection with Commercial Street down to Wood Street. So, it shouldn't interfere with folks heading up from Ridgewood. But yeah, be in contact with me and we'll, let's double-check that.
Just be concerned that, you know, traffic patterns are going to be altered and there may be additional traffic flowing around and parked cars and a lot of pedestrians.
Okay, thank you.
And the detour is going on the east side of Main Street down Madden, not down School Street like before. So, we shouldn't have a bunch of traffic.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
That's what I have.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say that the Hometown Celebration and having the use of the street and the number of people that enjoyed that was really wonderful. So, I'm glad that the city is accommodating that during a party on Main Street.
All right. We'll move on to item nine. These are department recommendations and action items. The first is to adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with Springbrook Software to acquire an enhancement to our accounting system, allowing bill pay and additional utility function. We'll hear from our Finance Director, Mr. Manuel De Rosco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. So, for today is a resolution to adopt an enhancement for utility billing. We were looking at the current menu speed that we have with Springbrook. And as we're building up that system, we noticed that there was a definite need and also some benefits that would be available to residents in terms of being able to access a portal so that you can check your bill and everything like that, do some online payments that make it easier. There's various other bells and whistles on it, but it looks up to the back-up system relatively easily. And so, we wanted to be able to make it a lot more seamless. So, we're asking for us to engage in a contract to add this module to our system as we do our implementation so that we can have it available to residents.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from Council?
Sure. I think it's worth noting that Measure K came out earlier today and we had a lengthy conversation about this particular software and whether or not we felt that it fit into the criteria of the types of things that we thought would enhance the city if it would be an expenditure that would fall under that category. And for the Springbrook Software, it was identified that 40% of the software would have to be paid for to the general fund. And there was consensus among the Measure K committee that we felt that that was a valuable way to, was an investment in using Measure K funds to support 40% of the cost of the Springbrook Software.
And just to clarify, the other 60% of that cost would be applied to our enterprise funds, so be paid by water and sewer as the billing corresponds with those items. So, just 40% of the cost of the software would apply to our general fund. Any other questions or comments from Council? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Has anyone out there, any questions or comments about this item? Mr. Walker?
Sort of sounded to me like as we just had a meeting about the rates going up, now it sounds like we're already trying to spend the money. Is that correct? You're saying this money's going to come out of water and sewer? So, that's what we're trying to do is up that to help that system or just to help the city in general.
There's always a portion of utility billing that is paid for by the enterprise funds because they're associated with those actions by the city. So, the adoption or the purchase of additional software to enhance utility billing would also be correspondingly paid for by the enterprise as well as by general fund.
And my, I mean, too. So, current software system that we have is called ACS. And that software system is actively being paid for by the enterprise funds as it stands. And it's actually about $15,000 more expensive than the current software system we're running for. So, there's going to be eventual savings, however implementation.
So, I'm just thinking that I'm hearing a lot of money going out and money won't. You just got to stay focused. I mean, I'm a longtime resident here and it's just if the system's working that we got, and over the long term, we got to pay a little bit more money. But as long as it's still working and gets us through the day, that's what we're looking for, is just to get through the day. Because we'd all like to spend a million dollars right now. If we had it, we would, but we don't.
Yeah, the system that we currently have right now is actually not quite working. It's not working.
Okay, that's what the main thing is. You want to make sure we got a system that's going to, because as part of paying online, I pay nothing online. My daughter does all over the phone and everything. But that's obviously an old thing.
The current counting system dates from the mid to late 1990s. It's outdated. We don't have the customer or client support that that system needs. It's antiquated, it's outdated. The newer system is actually, has greater reaches throughout the organization, what we call modules. So, you know, different departments can tag into the system and it'll be all connected and it'll be cloud-stored. So, we can reduce our dependency on localized servers.
And will save money over time.
Save money.
Well, yeah, I'm about that. But I'm just thinking we want to stay focused on trying to get out of debt. You know, it's beneficial to put this in, give her a roll one, because we don't want to, you don't put money into a bad horse. Entertain the blueback.
I think it's worth noting, too, that when we were talking about raising rates, this council already had a pretty good idea that we had a need for this software and that was already in need, that was identified when we were talking about raising rates. So, you wouldn't see your rates go up an extra few cents, whatever, maybe next month or whatnot specifically because of this software. This was something that was already earmarked, you might say.
And this is kind of akin to, like, if you had a computer in a business running Windows 95 and eventually it's going to die on you kind of thing. So, we've known all along that we had to find something. And so, that's the reason.
Well, it makes sense to me what you're doing. It's just that as a member of the public, I'm probably one person that's not going to use...
No, no. And it's more for the grand scheme of eventually saving us money and...
Let's not lose track of the fact that we have to be at the podium or the camera.
I just have one quick question. When a customer pays online, will they be charged a fee for each transaction? Because I am against that. Because every other bill, all the bills that I pay online do not charge me an extra fee. I can reroute DMV a different way and find a different avenue and not get charged as long as I open up the right website to do that. So, hopefully, we will not be charged to use our cards with that program.
So, currently, right now, if you were to pay online, you would be charged. Because we need a, we need a third-party system where we're able to apply the payment over to ours. And basically, it comes in as a CSV file which we have to manually upload into the system because it's antiquated and you can't use anything. This is actually integrated and there will be no charge as far as I might understand.
Thank you, Manny. Any other comments or questions from the general fund? Okay, I'm going to bring it back up and entertain a motion.
I would like to... All right, thank you, Manny.
Can I have a quick discussion? So, Manny, I have a system where people can pay, for example, their tuition. And if they use their bank account, it's an ACH draft, is a very minimal amount that I pay for that. Anytime you pay via credit card, there's a credit card processing fee. And I heard you just say that you didn't think that it was going to charge that, but I'm a little nervous about that statement because I'm not sure that that's possible. I think that you're still going to run in to a credit card processing fee. But rather, we may be able to be in a situation where the ACH is free.
So, my understanding is that there is a little bit of an upfront charge to the city in order to be able to implement this. However, my, the way it was presented to me was that there was going to be no additional charge to the actual payment itself because the fee is paid and integrated within the subscription itself.
So, if you're paying taxes on CETFA, there's no fee if you pay directly from your bank account as an ACH. But if you pay with a credit card, there's a 2% fee. So, that may exist with the City of Willets?
That might exist. I'm not 100% certain.
Because most municipalities try to cover those costs of the credit card processing.
I just want to make sure we don't...
Did the wrong...
So, stay tuned.
All right. So, we have a motion and we have a second to approve a resolution approving the agreement with Springbrook to enhance our utility bill paying. Dolly, remind me, we have a roll call.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Over to you.
Yes.
Standby.
Yes.
Mayor, time.
Yes. Thank you, Manny, for all your work to get us current. All right. The next item is discussion and possible action on the Caltrans proposed Willets Main Street Safety Enhancement Project. We're going to hear from our Community Development Director, Mr. Dusty Dooley.
Councilmember Dusty Dooley, Community Development Director for the City of Willets. So, this is a follow-up to a discussion that occurred at our last meeting where this Caltrans was proposing to do a safety enhancement project, essentially a road diet on South Main Street from Safeway Highway 20, Flower Street intersection, to a location on South Main Street about where the Evergreen Shopping Center is. The, it was a striping project being proposed by Caltrans and there was a healthy discussion, but ultimately, the council had to respectfully show their lack of support for the project. And so, what council or what staff has prepared is a letter to Caltrans, essentially telling them, "Thank you, but no thank you," as well as a resolution supporting sending that letter to Caltrans. I can tell you also that I'm speaking to Caltrans staff a day or two after the last council meeting. They heard counsel loud and clear. Everyone articulated themselves quite well, I think. And they are in the process of looking to hopefully redistribute those funds to another project elsewhere in the district. So, even though we haven't sent a formal letter yet, my understanding is they are going to be doing their best to find an additional user of those funds.
You got a little soft on the end, so maybe just clarifying. Caltrans is using those funds to potentially work on another project elsewhere. And at this time...
In District 1, not Willets.
And that there wouldn't be a road diet.
No, they've essentially pulled the road diet project. Although, they will appreciate adding, getting an official letter for their file from the city.
I just want to say that I'm sort of relieved because I was worried that despite the opposition that was expressed by the public and by the council members, that Caltrans might have just said, "Well, we're just going to do it anyway." But I'm very, I'm glad that they are heeding our concerns.
Yeah, and to their credit, too, they did recognize that this is something that they should have approached the city and the community with much earlier in the process, maybe even before they had, you know, tried to secure funding. And it was unfortunate that it came to us with, you know, limited opportunity for us to provide input. So, lessons learned.
Dusty, for clarification, is Caltrans still moving ahead with the surface treatment work? The...
No.
So, no surface, no...
Are they going to do striping? Maybe I should get clarification, but that was part of this overall project. And what they've done, what they've articulated to staff is that the entire project's been pulled. So, the micro-surfacing was, and the digouts was part of the overall project. That portion along with the re-striping, that was all one project and they're not proposing to do a portion of it.
Do we have any idea if they do intend to come back at some point just to do regular maintenance, re-striping the crosswalks and lines that are there now that are fading?
I'll seek and get that clarification from Caltrans as to what their typical maintenance schedule is and when they plan to come do a refresher for us here...
I was just noticing...
...of our existing roadway configuration.
Yes, I was just noticing the other day that the Highway 20 intersection in particular is looking pretty grim. It's hard to even see crosswalk at this point.
Last meeting when they were here, we talked a little bit about, and people were asking if they could do other work outside the scope or what would happen if the project got pulled. And they said that if they did come and do any digouts or any re-striping, that it would come from a different funding source. So, I guess we'll just have to wait and see if they're still motivated to work and use those other funds to get the job done.
Yeah, we work with so many facets of Caltrans and have a strong relationship with that agency and partnering with them on a number of items there. Funding the rail trail, they funded the planning process for Main Street and more. So, the relationship and the partnership remains strong.
Thank you.
I have a question about the actual wording of the letter and the resolution. I know that I felt like it was a little too much explanation or too much, I don't know, that it could have been simplified. And hearing that Caltrans has already decided to move on and drop that project, that I would wonder if we can just authorize a slightly revised and simplified letter that maybe Mayor and City Manager might, so instead of adopting this exact wording, is that...
I also had those concerns and I discussed them with the City Manager. I was under the impression that we would, we are not now under the gun to adopt this letter or approve this letter tonight, that we have some time to maybe...
Correct.
Okay?
Yes.
So, I guess I would recommend that we table this and wait to see if something drafts.
That'd be great.
Okay? Do we need a formal roll call on that for tabling or do we have consent?
There's consensus, especially this letter that we're looking to do. I think we're fine.
Okay. Thank you, Dusty.
Sure.
I just wanted to add that I think that while this feels like a win for our... I just wanted to add that I think that while this feels like a win for our community, especially in light of all of the opposition that was voiced, both in person at our last meeting and online, I do think it's important for us to remember that we have a significant rate of collisions at the south end of town. We have high speed, we have many business owners who are concerned about access to their driveways. So something at some point needs to be done at the south end. And while it's a state highway, we have to find a way to work with Caltrans to find a solution that fits our community and their needs. So yes, it's a win, but it's also kind of a loss because now we're at the bottom of the list with them. So I just hope that at some point, we can all come together to find a solution that works for Willets and Caltrans.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I'm going to stay here because I think I'm...
All right. So our next item is also from our esteemed Community Development Director. And this is...
We can do it.
Oh, yeah, we can open it up. Yes, yes. Thank you. I sort of thought maybe nobody would want to make public comment because we heard the cheers.
Remember, Nancy? No, no, it's good. Thank you. Thank you, Dusty. Oh, man. Now, okay, so what I was asked, what I was thinking is, yes, we want to come up with solutions. And I'm hoping that the community can help with those solutions. And I understand this whole process that just happened was not a normal process. And so I would love to be a part of that solutions process. And so how does one that's a resident and hopefully for a long time be involved with that?
Give your name.
Hopefully, there's opportunities for that?
Yes. And I think the next item on the agenda will maybe segue into that.
Thank you. I should run ahead.
Yes, Mr. Almeida.
John Almeida, resident of 954-90, Willets Valley. I'm happy that this did not go through. I believe in your next agenda item, but I do want to say something now that there's a way to make things better. And all I'm going to say is I'll mention what I want to say in the next agenda item to help safety and improve roads from my experience. And maybe in this agenda item, you could take note in the next agenda item of a different letter from maybe some of the ideas I promote after Dusty promotes the next agenda item. So hopefully, hopefully, it'll be something successful and we can eliminate the bottleneck at Safeway.
Thank you.
I'll save it for the next agenda item.
All right. Any other... Yes, Mr. Camerow.
I'm Bear Camerow and I've been living in Willets for 32 years. And it was way last week, so I missed the meeting, but I did email Caltrans and spoke strongly against it. And so I'm concerned about backing off the letter because I'm unclear whether Caltrans has very definitely said they're leaving or whether they just hinted at it. Because they, every time you get a state agency, they can change their mind on a homeless notice. So have they definitely told the city that it's done? Do we have a formal legal... We do. Okay. Then we don't have to go any further.
And we're not backing off the letter, we're just finessing the letter. The letter will be sent.
Thank you very much for leaving. But also for, you know, it was years ago that we had that bottleneck, a much worse bottleneck than the Safeway. And out of the blue, they finally decided to give us two lanes northbound. And within 30 seconds, the bottleneck went away. And now it looks like they're proposing to bring it back. So pleased to make sure that it's not going to happen. Thanks a lot.
Barry, I think that the majority made a very strong stance at the last meeting. That sent a strong message. And so I think they heard us.
So did I.
They heard the community, they heard the council.
However, just to clarify, Caltrans isn't leaving. They still own Highway 20. So they're not leaving, but they're not going to hoist this project upon us.
I have one other question. Will the letter be put in the agenda minutes once you do send it? Is that public information for us to read it?
It'll come back at another meeting.
Yes, yes. Just making sure we can read the letter after you revise it once.
It will be part of the next packet.
Next packet.
All right. Any other... Mr. Walker.
Is this the one you came to speak about?
That is close. That's close. So Mark Walker, resident of Willets, California, for the last 62 years. From my understanding, at the meeting I was at, when we had the discussion about Caltrans and the road in the south end, it came down to a comment I heard that it was an enforcement issue of people driving excessive speeds and a lack of enforcement. So now that we got a new police G B M, we can help that issue and see if that resolves some of the anxiety everybody's having out there.
Hey, man, I'm going to need a helicopter.
It costs a lot of money.
Is the budget already taken up?
All right. Any other comments on the...
Road diet.
Road diet.
All right.
Thank you very much. All right. So the next item is actually a revisit of the city's adopted plans. And we're going to hear a presentation and summary on the Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan, which was adopted by the council before this council back in 2017. And we will hear from our Community Development Director, Mr. Dusty Dooley.
There you go.
So just to clarify, this is the plan on record that Caltrans used to come up with their proposal to re-stripe that section. So it seemed like a good time to come back and relook at this plan and see if this was something the community is still interested in implementing.
And this was the prompt of the work, I imagine, you're going to talk about what process went into creating that?
Yeah. The main focus of the plan was really on that portion that has been relinquished. But the consultants did spend some time coming up with some conceptual plans to address the number of concerns we heard from the community. It's certainly not the only way to get there, but it was what was included in the plan.
I guess what I'm asking, Dusty, is a lot of people, I heard, say, "This was such a dumb idea. Why did the council back in 2014 to 16, before my time? Why did they come up with this idea?" And I can say, "Well, I wasn't here." But on this, with that, it's also important to understand, and which is what I'm asking you to elaborate, is that there was community input. The community did have an opportunity to give input. So although you may not have approved, with the council deciding about it, the community did weigh in on that. And I'm hoping that Dusty would elaborate a little bit on this presentation.
Yeah. Well, first, I'm on a fumble and getting this thing started here. But yeah, everything that you mentioned, I do plan to...
It's been addressed.
It's also true that that was before...
I was going the arrows up and down to go between the sides, but...
It's a new high-tech thing.
It was before the bypass was even operational and any of the changes happened on the portion of Main Street that got...
You're at the bottom.
That ultimately got relinquished. So we didn't have the benefit of the same information back in 2017.
Yeah.
That's why it's appropriate to look at it again now.
Indeed.
Yeah. So, you know, it's a little bit unfortunate that it was the Caltrans proposal that sparked us revisiting the plan. And, you know, caught off guard with the fact that there was a road diet in there. So there's some other things like the zip line over Main Street. We're going to close down Main Street every Friday for pickleball tournaments. There's a lot of things in this plan that you might not know about. But in all seriousness, you know, just like I turned out planned our land use element, you know, these plans that guide, these transportation plans that guide decisions, for them to be useful, no, it is important to monitor them and recheck them because there are things that can, you know, conditions can change. And our needs over time can change. So you do want to take a refreshing look at the plan. So happy to be back before council presenting the Willets Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan. The, this plan was really driven over the, driven by the fact that Caltrans was relinquishing that portion of Main Street from Highway 20 to the city limits past the high school. This was a grant-funded project. And like Councilmember Rodriguez mentioned, there was extensive public input that went into this. To the point where Willets actually won a state planning award for this plan. And a big part of why we won that award was the amount of attention we got from the community and their participation. And it's also true that especially, you know, with the focus on that portion of Main Street to be relinquished, it was engineers, it was transportation planners, landscape architects, a lot of, you know, bright minds that were listening to the community and ultimately, you know, reviewed these concepts, developed them, and made sure they were feasible and I also want to show respect to the other plans that the city's adopted and which this Main Street Corridor Plan was built off of. So a lot of the concepts that are included in that plan were initially born in these previous planning documents that are up here on the slide. So we've very much been building towards some of these concepts for a good amount of time. Here's a few slides here to talk about. It's okay. There's a glare on the TV and I don't want to say my eyesight's bad, but I'm sure they can read that.
You can turn that one, Dusty. The hell?
Yeah, I can see that a little better now. Thank you. So there, so it was built off of a week-long public engagement process. There was a survey that I think like 350 people responded to. And the top concerns were pedestrian bicycle safety, local business support, and intersection safety. We had an advisory group made up of locals representing different aspects of the community. There was a planning fair that was held for a few days where we actually did some mockups of some of the different improvements like extended sidewalks and doorabouts to show that they could be implemented and function the way they're intended to. Here's some pictures of the meeting there. And then Greta, I think...
What to me?
Look at how interested you are in planning right there. And I think that's the moment when you say, "Maybe I should join council."
Look how few gray hairs I have there before council.
Yeah, there's Erin, there's Diane. So again, there's Bill. So a lot of our folks were able to participate in helping develop this plan. This is the flyer showing the sneak preview there. And then again, these are some pictures showing some of the mockups that we did in friendly old noodle house there. That's East Commercial Intersection. I'm in the little picture in the front foreground there. So there were, and again, this isn't paraphrasing, this is straight out of the plan. These are the corridor-wide recommendations. So this not only held true for that portion of Main Street that was relinquished, but rather the whole Main Street corridor. It talked about the importance of gateways. And what you see here is an actual mockup that was from our Bechtel Road Railroad Corridor Study that was done in 2003, showing a roundabout at Brown's Corner. And it was envisioned that it could also serve as a gateway to the city. Again, gateways can be helpful in welcoming people to the city, but also letting drivers know that, hey, you're leaving your rural environment, you're coming into an urban environment. It could lend itself to some beautification aspects. And so there was gateways envisioned at the various entrances into the city. Bicycle circulation. Again, all these planning documents call for bike lanes continuously along Main Street for the entire corridor. Pedestrian safety measures. And there was discussions about transportation facilities and how you can make use of things like bus stops to reflect the identity and character of Willets. Having dedicated sidewalk extensions to mitigate accessibility issues at bus stops. You know, it was understood that low-impact developments, retaining storm waters, slowing off, retaining stormers slowing its release into the creeks so they don't get overwhelmed. Then they could also serve as some landscaping locations. So whether it's bio swells or flow-through planters, rain gardens, pervious pavement, all these different low-impact development ideas were, are sprinkled throughout the planning effort. Beautification, by that we meant street trees, landscaping, streetlights, street furnishing, improving facades, standardized signage. A lot of these ideas were born from this plan. Although we did hear those requests from the community during the planning process, it's also true that a lot of those were already identified in previous planning documents. So this is building off of those other studies as well. The plan broke up the segments, the Main Street into different districts or segments. For the Highway 20 to Valley Zone, one of the unique aspects of this zone was it was identified as the opportunity to link Highway 20 intersection to downtown. So towards that goal, we identified an interchangeable vinyl gateway banner that would be visible from Highway 20 that could promote different events or direct people to downtown Willets that were traveling on 20 or coming back from Fort Bragg. So it's an interchangeable banner. There was the concept of planted setter median strip that could hold some type of gateway feature, again with the idea of promoting downtown Willets. And then as you go past the intersection of Highway 20 towards Valley, we understood that there's a lot of folks that prefer to cross at Monroe Street near Mariposa Market. And so the team looked into opportunities to establish a safe crosswalk at that location. A lot of these folks were from the city and they got really excited that we had a creek in town. And so they came up with some ideas for signage, colored pavings, decorative railings at the bridge to promote the fact that we have an actual creek that's daylighted running through our city. And then a common feature kind of throughout pedestrian refuges and enhanced crosswalks to support pedestrian safety. The next district was broken up between Valley Street to Wood Street. Here, it was recognized that we have an increase in pedestrian foot traffic, recognizing that there's more businesses in this area. We have the active retail frontage at the street. And then Valley Street has been understood to be, you know, not the safest intersection in town. So there was specific attention and ideas generated to increase safety at that location. You have West Valley and East Valley that are offset. You have the post office right there with their parking lot. So there's, you have the two crosswalks. So there's quite a bit to pay attention to as a driver at that location. Ultimately, we did work with Caltrans to implement a portion of these ideas. For instance, we extended the sidewalk of West Valley Street to create that 90-degree intersection between West Valley and Main Street. That shortened the crossing distance, improved site distances for cars pulling out of West Valley. What you're seeing here is a concept of creating a mountable median here that would prevent folks from making a left turn out of Valley Street. It would also serve as a pedestrian refuge there in the center lane and potentially shorten the distance for, along with some doorabouts, to shorten the distance for pedestrian crossings there. And there was a couple other options that were presented in the plan as well towards improving safety at that location. The next district was from Wood Street to Commercial Street. This was identified as our downtown core. We had the biggest concentration of businesses. The plan speaks to creating a series of eligible spaces that high sense of place and safe movement of people, suggested arrival in downtown. And that, and I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit here, but that's something you heard from folks on the southern portion of Main Street too, that not having that sense of place or identity. of place or identity. You know, it's not unique to this plan, but included in many other plans, pedestrian furnishing seating, bike racks, bulbous, sidewalk extensions, raised crosswalk at Van Lane intersection, recognizing that that's a preferred crosswalk for many, trying to raise its visibility. And that was actually part of another plan to sort of connect the alleys and activate some of the spaces like the Willet's Community Theater that's just off of Main Street. There was, you know, again, with sidewalk extensions, there's an opportunity to put out some public art about that, the ideas that was brought up in the public meetings as well. And this is borrowed from another plan, having a plaza on the east side of Van Lane and taking up a portion of our existing parking lot there to create this plaza or pocket park. North of Commercial, heading out to essentially the high school, the focus was on providing safe access to the high school businesses and nearby neighborhoods. So towards that, is it on here? There's the crosswalk that exists at Sherwood Road. That's not the safest crosswalk. We were able to establish, consistent with this plan, an enhanced crosswalk at State Street. And hopefully that's become the preferred crossing for high school students as they're going between, you know, high school lunch or whatever the main crossings are. So we were able to implement that consistent with this plan. Thank you, Bill Wilson. And then there's also in the plan to establish a median at that crosswalk at State Street and potentially put some type of artifact to also serve as a gateway to the northern inch or way into downtown. So that's not something that we've implemented, but that is an idea that is in the plan. And then the two-way off-street bicycle lane to access the high school was another main component of planning in that segment. And two-way off-street bicycle lane, I don't know if you get an easy vision of what that is, but basically that would be an internal bike route within the high school boundaries. So it was something that was shared with the high school as an idea. So I mentioned earlier at the beginning of the presentation, when we had, this was funded with grant funding. So we were paying consultants with those grant funds to develop this plan based on community concerns and ideas. And the heavy focus, the major attention was to that portion of Main Street that was relinquished, what those districts that I just went over. We also asked them, you know, hey, we've heard, you know, just, it's Caltrans roadway. It's not an immediate change for us. We don't really have control. Ultimately, Caltrans has to be the one to approve it regardless of how much we want changes on that end of town. But what we heard was, people drive too fast. There's no street trees, it's not pretty. There's, it's not safe for pedestrians to cross the street, and there's a lack of identity or character. And, you know, since this plan's been developed and we've been able to implement some improvements to downtown like street trees, my understanding from talking to folks that have participated in different chamber meetings is, why can't we have some of those things? And the reality is, is because there isn't space to do it. You don't, your sidewalks are narrow, you have power lines over you. You know, there's other constraints, there's no irrigation, there's, it's a different, it's a different setting. So towards that, that's where the idea of a road diet was developed. So, you know, I'll go through this pretty quick, but we're looking at that area south of Flower Street that's still Highway 20 now. There was a focus on pedestrian bikes, access also, key vehicles moving at the speed limit, projected post, so there was assumptions that the post bypass volumes could accommodate a single lane in each direction. And then the trade-off was with that excess width, you could reassign it to support planting and safe bicycle access. So you take that space, you can put in a bike lane and/or you can put in wider sidewalks that would give you the room to put in things like street trees and some of the street furnishings and some of the other beautification efforts. The other thought was, if you have somebody that's going the speed limit, you can't make use of the other lane to speed past them. And so that was the idea of behind the traffic calming with the road diet. The additional benefits were better visibility approaching cars. And then obviously with fewer travel lanes, it's easier to create safer pedestrian crossings. With Caltrans project, it was very much a piecemeal of that. And so you weren't going to get that full benefit, rather it was just going to be the striking component of it. And again, any ideas that we come up with, we do need to be aware that it is still Caltrans right-of-way and the improvements are subject to their standards. This is just, again, this is straight from the plan. This is showing the concept, the full concept of the road build-out with planted medians, with the two travel lanes, the buffer bike lanes, as well as the landscaping on the sidewalk there. This is, you know, the street now, just to show you how this has been implemented. This setting is different than our setting. For instance, this is down in San Diego. They implemented a road diet and a roundabout. And you can see, they took the lanes, they were able to extend out the sidewalks, you have some dining areas, you have some landscaping. You can see they're able to implement a pedestrian crossing there that looks, you know, pretty safe. But in that section, like our downtown, you know, the commercial units are right at the back of the street where is in that area, this Miracle Mile, that's not the same setting. Here's another jurisdiction that was able to implement a road diet. And you can see, they're able to extend the sidewalk out, do some beautification. So that was the idea behind the trade-off of reducing the travel rates. And so beyond that, they did, the plan did spend some time on a few specific areas within the city. We, again, revisited the idea of doing a roundabout at Brown's Corner. According to the previous city engineer, there is room to do a roundabout at that location and it wouldn't interfere with like the gas station there or any of the other businesses. And it would certainly, that intersection there at South Bechtel and Main Street is considered a Level F based on how long it takes to make a turn out of there, especially a left-hand turn. And so the idea was, rather than putting in a stoplight, is to do a roundabout and then have it serve as a gateway treatment for the city as well. Kill a few birds with one stone. Again, this has come up in many planning documents, the issues at the north Bechtel intersection where folks are waiting to take a left, but you have to wait for the people that are taking a left onto Bechtel off of Main Street, they get the right of way, and then you have the people that just want to take a right backing up. We have more and more development happening specifically out East Hill Road as well as on Bechtel Road, so the situation, we only have more traffic lining up on there. And so this was an idea of an improvement to deal with that situation. And then recognizing the situation in a safe way, at the time we were going through the planning process, Bruce and Ed had just purchased the old Remco Building and weren't quite sure what the plans were. There's some ingress egress issues coming out of there that would make it difficult for any type of commercial development. And so we were trying to make use of the traffic engineers and planners and try to develop some ideas that might help support better ingress and egress for some type of development at that location in the future. So there was some heavy focus on those three areas as well. And that completes the overview of the award-winning.
Thank you. I think many of us, seeing the presentation, maybe brought back a few memories of being there and participating. Now we get to see all the fancy graphics of what it would look like, doesn't look like my hometown. And certainly many of us may have thought that there was going to be less traffic than there is. And things, I know for some people, things have changed. We'll have to discuss, I think it's important to have a discussion about what elements of that plan may not be the vision of people today. Knowing what we know now and seeing the traffic patterns that we see, you know, yes, some of the traffic is left town, we don't need to wait for an hour to get from the south to the north, but we do still have some traffic congestion. Is this, you know, is this plan still represent all we want today? There's elements of it that I still like, but I don't know how it is we engage the community to see if there are elements that we want to update. If people are passionate about certain sections of it or...
Yeah. I just want to say that, and I heard this from council in the discussion with Caltrans, so I don't think I'm telling you something you already don't know, but it is important to respect the work that goes into these planning documents. And you're stating, hey, the traffic levels may not have been reduced to what we thought. That becomes a good reason to reconsider something. Hey, we implemented some of these items in downtown. What did we like? What didn't work exactly how we function it? That becomes a good reason to revisit it. But when you have so many people that took the time, and you said this too, so I'm not going to articulate it as well as you did, Councilmember Rodriguez, but, you know, it's important to honor that. So if there's not sort of new information and we're sort of hearing those same arguments, I don't, it's a slippery slope a little bit, and I want to be sort of careful of how we sort of pick and choose off of this.
Well, I...
Because from my perspective, it's, you know, we do these planning exercises and the conceptual plan for the road diet, I think, was, that's not what I'm specifically talking to specifically, but, you know, that, those are our guiding documents. Those are what we plan off of and move forward on. And if...
It was a tough statement to make out there for here of being disrespectful to all those who participated in this. But there are quite a few elements of this plan that we never, we never saw. We saw the banner, we saw the roundabout, we saw more of the streetscaping. But I think Mayor Connie has made this statement over and over again, that there are many of the other pieces that we haven't seen implemented. And I think that if we're going to continue down the road of even embracing the idea that this is what our town could look like, I would like to see more components of that plan come together. You know what I mean? I think that you're not going to get community buy-in on this full plan unless we can see more of the pieces. Like, we've got the downtown section, let's finish that downtown section. Let's keep evolving it before we jump on to the next project. That's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Jerry?
You know, it kind of, what Sabina said, and actually what some of the folks said at the previous meeting, some of the facts, I guess the data may have changed, and I think you said that would be a good reason. I am curious, I kind of felt like with Caltrans, they said, hey, you've got this plan and we have these traffic counts that we got, and yeah, they were during the pandemic, but maybe, yeah, this is going to work. And I kind of felt from Caltrans' side that we got rushed in. And I am curious how this relates now, because before, as Manj said, this was all done in the bubble or the vacuum of, this is what we think it's going to be after the bypass and now this is what it is. I'm just curious for that, because I do want, I like the idea of a roundabout, and I got to tell you that I used to be very skeptical about roundabouts, but I've seen studies on roundabouts and they actually move traffic faster. So as much as I, I used to curse roundabouts when I traveled in Oregon because I thought, I think it was my own ignorance as far as how they work. But everything I've read on roundabouts are that they do move traffic quicker. And unless you get some old guy like me that gets confused when he gets there, that after that, they do work. So I do see a lot of elements in that plan that I would like to, I am curious on whether or not there's grant money out there to fund a traffic study to get our own traffic counts so that when we re-approach this or we get this, it's, or maybe updated numbers from Caltrans once we've had some more time, that then we can, as a community, come back and say, guess what, guys, it didn't really change, we still have these problems. Or, yeah, it changed dramatically and this is the deal. Because I know how speed surveys get worked, and I think they did a good job of explaining that at the last meeting. But the problem is that I think the days they picked were probably the wrong days they picked. And again, it has to do with when they had the traffic person, et cetera. I don't think it was a demonic thing on Caltrans' side. It's just, I would like to have seen some better data and, you know, put forward. And I still felt rushed with, and again, not you, but Caltrans, I think they saw this, took the parts they thought we would jump on and then said, we'll give you some paint. And, hey, yeah, all the other good things, yeah, we don't have the money for. Because I think somebody brought up the Safeway thing and they said, no, it's not going to include any of that. So, and that's, those were the concerns back in 2016 that I raised, you know? I was actually skeptical of removing the delineators because we had problems, and actually it worked out pretty good. So that's mine.
I think that Jerry brings up an interesting question of, how would the city go about having its own traffic study? I mean, I think what was hard for a lot of people was the numbers that Caltrans were giving us didn't feel like what we experienced. I mean, I pay attention to bikes because I like riding a bike. When they said 37 bicycles, I was like, give me a break. There's never been 37 bicycles. I, you know, I would love that, but it's not real.
Right.
So when you hear things like that, it makes you kind of question the validity of any of the traffic counts that they're giving us. So how would the city, you know, go about getting their own counts to let our community know whether or not any of these would be worth implementing?
Yeah, I agree that the council didn't get complete data to make an informed decision. And we attempted to include that in the letter as part of the reasoning behind it. And yes, the city has the ability to commission a traffic study and there may be some grant opportunities out there. And understand that's data that the council and staff would be interested in seeing.
I see some value in a traffic study, but we're all taxpayers and those are tax dollars for a traffic study that all of us can see with our own eyes, how much traffic there is. Whether it's grant money or it's city money, it's taxpayer money. And so as a taxpayer, I want a traffic study when I can see with my own eyes. For me, I'm more focused on completing other elements of the plan that I think are attainable. That's just my perspective.
Yeah, and we're continuing to do that. But you never quite know what opportunities are going to present themselves. So you sort of have your ideal scenario, but then you're always ready to, if there's funding available there to support a, looking at a crosswalk at Walnut Street, even though it's not part of the downtown segment, we're probably going to jump on that. But I understand the logic of what you're saying.
Just don't worry, there's troubleless.
Right.
Manj?
One overarching concern is many, because as we know, road projects are incredibly expensive and especially with Caltrans owning that section, if they're not going to fund anything, I don't want us to get our hopes up and do another set of manipulations of the plans that we think would be really great. I love the idea of a roundabout. I just don't see funding coming our way. So I don't, I just don't want us to spin our wheels with some vision that we're going to actually implement things that are beyond our needs. But the other thing I want to say is, I really, I know a lot of people here would like to comment on this and with the input that you've already heard and knowing that Caltrans owns this section of road and, you know, if there's other comments from the public.
Yes. Thank you. Before I open it up, Mr. Stransky, do you have any comments that you'd like to make on this presentation?
Nope.
Okay. Then I invite members of the public to come up and introduce yourselves and make comments on this presentation we've just seen.
John Almeida, Willet's Valley resident, resident in Willet's for a long time, over 65 years, 67. Anyways, I did run the road crew here. I was involved in rebuilding the intersection of Hurst Road and Valley Road when that north spur was... North Spur was completely gone and had to reestablish it. One of the things I do see, I was like you, Jerry, I didn't believe in roundabouts. But roundabouts do work. They do two things. One is they slow the traffic down to 15 miles an hour, and they keep it moving. And a good-built roundabout always turns its lane to the right so people don't go the wrong direction as it goes into the intersection. What I'd like to see is a letter rewritten to Caltrans saying, we appreciate that, but as time has moved on, the priorities have changed, and there's two things that we would like to have that was in this plan, and it's a roundabout. Right now, I know it's going to sound funny, but you know how to think about it for a while. It doesn't look like there's room at Highway 20 South Street, Main Street intersection. But if Caltrans was talked into acquiring the old Jack in the Box, and I don't know if they, if it's open for sale or what it is, but the center of that roundabout can be moved more towards that Jack in the Box. That leaves room to make a big enough roundabout for trucks to get around. That keeps the flow going, and it ends the bottleneck completely going north. It will completely, totally end it, because you'll always have traffic moving around it. You move your crosswalks back, like you see it in the plan here, and you don't have people trying to cross right out the roundabout. They're backed 150 feet, whatever it is. That'll keep it going. Once you see it's successful there, you can get them talked into doing the Brown's Corner, which, in that little valley that drops down towards Arrow's Manor, plenty of extra room to make the roundabout work there. You have to adjust the center of the intersection, but after you adjust the center of the intersection, there'll be enough room for truck traffic. It also brings it down to one lane in that area of the roundabout. But remember, there's no traffic lights, and it's always moving. And I went around the ones in Lake County, and that's what won me over. They always, when you come to that intersection, two things. They slow traffic down to 15 miles an hour, and they change the approach going into the roundabout so nobody can go against traffic. And it seems to work very well. The one other thought was that coming into town, if we could ever get the roundabout there, that's going to slow traffic to 15 miles an hour right there, which is going to help coming through town that they won't speed back up. So you've got to slow it down right as they get into town. I think the Highway 20 South Street, Main Street intersection, and the Brown's Corner ones, the ones to start with, and you'll see such an improvement. And still leave the four lanes through the middle of Miracle Mile, because if you go down to single lanes, like I said before, right now you have the backup coming north, but you'll also have problems going south that we don't have now, like McDonald's or any right-hand turn into a business where somebody's got to stop for a pedestrian, then everybody starts backing up. Or even pulling into these places like McDonald's, and everybody's backing up, because there's somebody in that parking lot backing out of their spot, and they can't get in, and then you start backing up the single lane. So having both, two lanes, each direction, Miracle Mile like we have now, is still good. It's just those roundabouts, and it can be done. I would, I would request that you adjust your letter and say that times have changed, and we don't want to push Caltrans out. We want you. We don't want to offend you. We just want to adjust the project. And adjust the project right now is there's probably going to be a time limit if that Jack in the Box is even available.
Mr. Earl, maybe you have three minutes to say something.
Okay. But anyways, I would like the city to look into that and ask Caltrans to come back and present something on those two intersections.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I would like to suggest that with all these elaborate, expensive plans, that sometimes little, small, subtle things that doesn't cost hardly any money at all can make a huge difference in this town. And one suggestion for the two bottlenecks up in the north end of town, which is the red light at Commercial Street and the red light at Sherwood Road, is the left turn arrows, where people back up a long way at times, and a lot of traffic wants to avoid it, so they go around City Park. I've recently visited Sacramento and Santa Rosa, and now Ucaya have all developed, have taken on a new system for their left turn lanes. When the light, everybody's sitting there at the red light, waiting to go, and then when they get the green light, the green left turn lets them go left, and then as soon as the, the traffic's there at the time leaves, turns red. But down there, in those three cities, instead of the left turn lane turning red, it turns to a blinking yellow. And the traffic has improved immensely at all those intersections, because people don't sit there and wait and wait and wait. And I've driven by all those, and I've seen personally how quickly intersections empty out. And I think, I think it would do wonders for our town just to experiment with it, if nothing else, just try, instead of the red left turn, try the blinking yellow. And when, when the red light turns red again in the Main Street direction, that also, the left turn also turns red, and again, makes the green only when there's traffic sitting there. And so people are never sitting there waiting and waiting and waiting when they can move a lot quicker. And I highly recommend the city just to give it a try. I think it'd do wonders at both intersections.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ragda Zakaria, Willets residents. I honestly, I've been to all the meetings, and understand it was about $1.9 million budget for Caltrans to fix that section. And I honestly believe in go back to the renegotiating table before sending that letter, because I think the way the information came out, a lot of us got really upset after reviewing that, the visual of the plan in 2016. There is a lot of good things in that plan. If you can go back and have our department meet with Caltrans and say, this is what we would like. The roundabout will solve our problem. I've seen them in countries all over the place. It's number one item to solve the problem. So I don't appreciate, I don't like the bike idea, because this is an industrial section of the town, but I think you need to go back to them and smooth them a little bit, say, okay, we jumped the gun. $1.9 million is a lot of money you'll never be able to afford. They can fix under the ground, I understand, I think her name is Vicky, she said some of the funds is going to go to fix under the grounds, the streets. They can enhance the sidewalks. They can fix the speed limit, because I believe, he said, that they cannot set the speed limit only according to their study. So there are a lot of good things. You can go back to them, and they can come back to the table without the bike claim, for sure. The roundabout will work. I really encourage you to go back to them and just start fresh and say, this is what we have, this is what we don't. $1.9 million is a lot of money that we can't afford, the city, forever. They can fix that section with two roundabouts, one probably by Safeway if they can, but by the Brown Center. They will solve all the problem, and they will enhance that section. And like you said, like, they control that section. They could easily come back and say, no, we own this, we will do whatever we want. So I think if you go back to them in a positive way, say, this is our plan, take the good of it, add it, see what you can do with it, and let's move on with it. That's what I recommend.
Thank you.
No bike claims.
Just to comment, it wasn't a negotiation. That was not an option. It was, here is the plan.
I know, I was at the meeting, but sometimes, you know, because I heard the gentleman of Caltrans, they were upset, you know, we'll just fight with them. But I think we don't send them that. Let's say our department meet with them and see if we can compromise.
Thank you.
But no bike claims.
I'm Nafeli Barrett, the Chair of the Mendocino Council of Governments. We are your regional transportation planning agency. So I want to speak about this plan, but also the planning process in general, because I think it's important, and I think it's important for people to have an understanding of what goes into it and how long it takes to get from conceptual planning to implementation. It takes a very long time. So one of our responsibilities at MCOC is developing a regional transportation. And in that, we have an implementation plan that's divided into short-term and long-term projects. Our short-term projects are, it's a 10-year timeframe. So that's short-term for us still. So it's really important when a well-developed plan comes along with lots of community, with robust community engagement, that it doesn't just get discarded after a few years, because it'll take many years to really implement it. And the public input that went into that plan is really valuable. The public input that comes at the time of implementation, the input that was here tonight, is also really valuable. It is important to consider all of that when implementing a project. It's important to consider the input that went into the advanced planning process and the input that comes at implementation. It's unavoidable that you're going to have people that come out and express concerns at the time of implementation. It's something I've seen with lots of other transportation projects, once they get to implementation. And that's valid. That input is valid, but it's not more valid than the input that the community provided earlier in the process. So I think, you know, it makes sense when you get to implementation, you look at your current data, you consider if conditions have changed. That all makes sense. But I also would encourage you not to, not to rehash the details of a plan every few years, because if you're constantly rehashing long-term plans, you will never get to implementation, because it just takes so long. It also takes funding, and it takes a long time to get the funding. Also, typically, to successfully secure enough funding for a large project, you need a good plan with lots of public input. That's the kind of thing that the state that gives out the money wants to see when selecting projects. They want to see strong community input. Let me look at my notes. I guess I said, I said everything I wanted to say, so just, just to read it, Dusty said a lot of this. This was a great plan. I was here for some of the charades that went into it. It was really well-attended. As a planner, I will tell you, it's hard to get people to show up and participate in those efforts. So when you do, I think it just makes it a much, much stronger and more valuable plan. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Is it common, though, that when you have a plan, and granted, it's been a while, but is it common for someone to take your plan and not give you your plan, but give you just a chunk of it and say, that's it? Because that's how I kind of felt that they did. I felt they did us a disservice.
And, you know, I, my comments weren't really addressed specifically to the project proposal that you got from Caltrans. And I think you had some, I think Caltrans thought that they were coming in and implementing something you would want, because it was components of that plan. They had a particular funding source that had certain requirements tied to it, and they thought, well, we could implement this part of this plan under the timeline. The timeline was, I think, was a big thing with this particular funding source. They had to do things that could be, go through environmental process quickly, go through design quickly, so it was going to be those more easily implemented components. So I think in their mind, they thought, we've got this money, here's something we can do for Willets, this is in their plan. Obviously, it left out a lot of the other things that were in that plan, and there wasn't a lot of discussion with, with the city, you know, it kind of caught everyone by surprise. So I think those are valid concerns. But it is, it is not unusual that, yes, you will have to implement in stages. I think your other concerns, you know, your concerns with, with that proposal are, you know, certainly, they make sense, but it is not at all unusual that you would be implementing in stages.
Thank you.
Nafeli, thank you. Would anyone else in the public like to comment?
When talking about beautification in the south, south end of town, we also have to keep in mind who's maintaining all of that. Currently, we have trees in our north side, and it's not always maintained. So if we're going to add more work to the city or Caltrans, right, how often are they coming? Because I see the weeds at the middle of Taco Bell growing really in that little median. Like, they haven't been there. They haven't been on our streets to maintain them. They own them. And even our own city. The trees are, they constantly put debris on the sidewalks, and that's a big job to continue to maintain. And so we also have to think about that. Yes, we want beautiful trees, and we want, we want nice things, but then who, who do we have that's going to maintain it on a regular basis? Do we have the personnel? Do we have the funding? All of that comes into consideration, too. And then the businesses. Are we going to make sure that the businesses look, the fronts, are we offering a grant to help business owners keep the beautification up in our city? Are we expecting the business owners to make sure that their front facade is painted and updated and all of that? So if we want to talk about beautification of our south town, it is not just the street. It is not the pavement. It is everything around. And it's not just adding some trees or some grass in the middle of the street. So there's a lot to consider, that there's more than just what the city can do with the pavement.
Hi. I'm Marianne Johnson. I didn't think I was going to get up today, but after the wonderful result of, I think, our collective voices of really trying to kind of put a stop to feeling bullied personally by the Caltrans plan, I think this is a nice opportunity to speak up again. I totally understand the idea of, you know, planning takes time. I can't even imagine the amount of hours, energy, and effort that goes into doing this. But being held hostage by, well, we haven't already done, so let's just move ahead, despite many potential issues that have come up since we've seen south towns, or north town with the changes. We have different ideas, different values. Obviously, the numbers of traffic seem very askew from what would have, you know, been projected back then. But I think we need to take the opportunity to reassess and not to devalue the work that went into it, but not be chained by that either, especially if the views of the people have changed. We've been, we've, you know, gone through the bypass and gone through the pandemic and have seen the impact of the first part. Those should be enough of a factor to kind of move forward. It's not like everything's been the same this whole time, and now we've just decided we need to arbitrarily reassess. Like, I think there's been a lot of moments that can encourage some change. And what is, here's the magical question. What's the opportunity to change this? Is this set in stone? Can it be changed? Can it? If so, you know, I would love to be a part of that. Maybe not on a Wednesday deadline day for me, but if we could come up with, you know, a committee of input or a way to be able to help do that, I think it would be really valuable. And through my effort in the paper and online effort, I think we could get a lot of involvement from the community that's here presently. I mean, do those people move away? Are those people still here? Do new people move in who have different ideas? You know, yellow blinking lights weren't a thing back then. I mean, I think that's a nice, I mean, I don't really like them, but whatever. I mean, I think it's a good solution, you know, considering the options. So I would say if there's an option to change or update or whatever, we would love, I'm sure there's many people who would love to be involved in that. I think it's an important step based on the changes that have happened. Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
I'm Mark Walker, is here in Willets. So my perception is, when I... come down to one lane," and they didn't talk about, so if they're going to expand on the plan, they need to expand on the whole plan, telling us, "This is what's still going on. This is the plan you guys gave to us. This is what we figured out. And yes, we're still doing the roundabouts, but we're going to try to squeeze it down to two lanes down here. This is our idea," kind of thing, instead of just kind of throwing us out the window and saying, "This is what we're going to give you."
Well, Caltrans did have the funding source to give us the whole plan.
Right, I understand. But, that's what we need to say. It's like, "We're not against you. We're with you, but how about we wait for the big dollars? We understand we won't get something done now, but Highway 20 should have been when they first built the bypass. It came right down through a Safeway, Coles Hardware hooked it up, and not even worried about it. Pullboulders, here's where you rode, use it. Do what you've got to do with it." Got to solve that whole problem. They would have had, because at that point, they're putting a bypass, I'm sure they would have had the funds to put that offer up in. I don't know. Maybe they had a discussion, and everybody figured, "Hey, you know, who owns that property? He don't want to sell." I don't know. But, that's why I said.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other voices that would like to speak to this presentation that we have heard? Yes. And then Nikki.
I strongly recommend you reopen the negotiation. Take the best of what we have the plan. It has a lot of good things. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. And talk to Caltrans because they have the money. They still have to submit it by end of December, and then, it's $1.9 million. So, take the best of both, and let's use them. And I just want to remind everyone, there is another exit coming to Willets, the northern exit. And actually, I started taking it. So, if we don't solve the problem of the southern part, you are going to have a lot of cars exiting the second, the northern part, and coming the other way to Willets. So, just don't reinvent the wheel. Take the best of both and come to a common goals. That's all I say.
Thank you.
Nicole Carver? I just want to add to some of that. One really important thing that was said is current data. You know, I think it's really important that we do not go by what was 10 years ago, 20 years ago. I have to disagree with Serena because I think we do need to do a study just so we have a ground or prove why we want to move on with this instead of that, so we can say, "Hey, no, it wasn't really 37 bikes. So, it was almost 60 bikes that came." Or, you know, there's like now 20 families that are, "Don't take in their car and walk to school," or whatever it might be. The other thing that I think, and I know it's hard, but the timeline between doing the plan and the action. I talked to Serena the last council, like, you know, the ones that decided what Caltrans showed us, barely any of them is here anymore. The city engineer isn't here anymore. The city manager that agreed that isn't here anymore. Some of the city council members are not here anymore. So, it's like what was very interesting to them, there is no interest now in the citizens. They don't want to see that anymore. Ongoing updates. I think you said that. It's like, yeah, open it up, not to reinvent the wheel, but to say, "Hey, you know what? This is perfect, but how about can we add that little thing to it?" Okay, it's possible, or sorry, it's not. It shouldn't be that hard. With the timeline between planning and action, I wonder, and I do not know, I totally have no clue, but is there a way to bank a grant until it's actually time to build? Like, half the time to start planning everything that you want, and then, hey, there is that money, so you can start and don't have to wait 10 years. Because whatever we cite today, in 10 years, we may all have electric vehicles, and we don't need any roads. I mean, who knows?
Still need roads, like your vehicles.
Well, not if they start flying. Yeah, that's it. And the other ones, like I said, the ones that are, help decide that they're all.
Thank you. All right. It is 8:45. I believe everyone has had a chance to make their comments. I'm going to close the public comment portion. The presentation, the Agenda Summer Report called for a presentation, and the recommended action was to accept the presentation from staff, solicit input from the public, and to provide feedback and recommendations for continued implementation. I believe we've heard the report. We've heard from the public. Council has given some feedback. I don't know that any recommendations have been made for implementation. I don't know how you feel, Dusty, if you received what you needed to.
You know, certainly, if there's any other direction that council has on the front of their mind, you know, please, you know, please share it. Otherwise, as we move forward with any implementation, we'll be sure to let council know about that. So, and we can get feedback about any of those specific implementation measures at that time as well. Right now, we have a grant into Caltrans for just under $3 million, and we're hoping to find out. It's highly competitive, but we're hoping to find out if our grant was awarded. It could be as soon as tomorrow. We were told September. And in that, we would be implementing, if it's awarded, the vinyl banner over Main Street near Oak Street, and as well as, I feel like there was one other improvement escaping my mind, but it's something that was presented to council previously that was part of our grant list. But, other than that, we don't have any other leads outside of spending our own resources for, you know, bowl bounds or extended sidewalks or some of those other more common themes that were found in the plan.
I just wanted to say, I wasn't looking for, I would like better data, but I know that at times, opportunities come up for updated numbers or our own traffic studies may be unrelated, and so, keep it in open mind where we could combine that is what I was looking for. And also, I kind of want to make it clear, there are no more negotiations that we can open up. It was either, this money was available for this, if we wanted to take their plan as they presented it, or they would reprogram the money within the district, and it would be used somewhere else. So, it's not a question of us going back to a negotiating table. And this was, they made it clear that within, it could also come back in 10 years or longer. And I think that's the numbers that she spoke about there, that sometimes these take, in these 10-year bites, and they could come back again with what we want or some other things, but again, it's competitive. We're not the only ones. There are projects all over District 1 that, and so, that's how it works. So, that's why I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Dusty, would you clarify? You said that we are seeking a competitive grant that is $3 million?
I think it's $2.77.
Okay.
This is the Clean California Grant. Three million. They're, yeah, it's going to be a really nice sign. Yeah. Did I mention it's going to be lit? Yeah, so, I appreciate that. Yeah, I didn't want anyone thinking we were looking for a $2.77 million sign. I guarantee we would not get funded on that one. That would not be highly competitive. That grant was a very cool opportunity, and it has a plethora of improvements. It's got money for free dump days, doing creek cleanup. It would fund construction of a pavilion in the park to support things like the farmer's market. It would fix the water fountain at Babcock Park, as well as do some further implementation to activate that park. There's street trees, there's signage, there's, I mean, I'm just touching on it.
They took some preliminary items that were identified for the east commercial street corridor, lighting up there as well.
And again, kind of to tie it back to this, what we did is, we were able to pick and choose from a variety of existing planning documents that met the criteria and put our best foot forward for being competitive in the grant. So, by having those planning documents, again, it, as Nefeli mentioned, it really sets the path forward to seek funding, and so, it's very important to have those documents and, you know.
Okay, and then my editorial comment is, I do think that a roundabout at Brown's Corner would go, would be a very high priority, and it might impact, as John Alvedo was saying, slow traffic down, in addition to be much more efficient and safe at that corner, which is a very unsafe intersection right now, because even if people are going 15 miles an hour, it doesn't take them very long. And if they do have an accident, it's not fatal. But, if you're trying to turn onto a street where people are going 15 miles an hour and you get hit, that's fatal. So, anyway, the roundabout would be safer, and it would be, have a traffic calming impact. But, I have a feeling that is not a $1.9 million project. I have a feeling that even if we told Caltrans, "This is the one thing we'd like to see first, before you do any other messing around. Give us that roundabout." We're talking, you know, 10 years or more. I don't know how much time we're talking about. And the city doesn't have that kind of money ourselves.
Well, I was just thinking back to when we were looking at the safety and the turning onto Foster Lane, and we were discussing a light, and then, I remember seeing the presentation on the roundabout, and the amount of money that was attached to that, just, it blew my mind. I can't remember how much it was, but I know it was millions and millions of dollars. And so, when I look at this plan, and everybody's talking about, "Yeah, we want a roundabout. A roundabout sounds wonderful." I'm thinking back to that moment when I was sitting in awe of how much a roundabout is going to cost. So, you don't think it's realistic for us to say, "Let's negotiate and hope that we get a roundabout." I mean, that would be lovely, but I just don't see it happening. And when we had to take a stand at the last meeting, it was a hard, painful stance to take, because we knew that there were going to be some repercussions. We knew that some extensive planning had gone into this, and we knew that there wasn't an opportunity to negotiate and try to find something else. There is no time to come up with another plan. That ship has sailed. But, in terms of the letter, you know, I think that maybe there is an opportunity at the end to maybe state that there were other elements of the plan that the City of Willets is still very much interested in, and we would like to continue to have that conversation without picking and choosing, but really just keeping the door open to the fact that we want to keep having that conversation. And we hope that the next time they take an element of our plan and they're excited about it, maybe they could share that with us. Because I think that was part of the struggles, that we were left out of the loop, and in turn, we're, it's our responsibility to speak to you all and let you know what's going on when we don't know, that we can't tell you. We don't even have time to try and get you to buy in on the idea, so, yeah.
Well said. All right. Are you satisfied? Thank you so much, Dusty, for both of those presentations. We'll now move on to item 9D, which is a resolution to approve a revised Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, establishing guidelines for City of Willets employees, which would be effective September 14th. Are we doing that? Yes. Oh, and Karen is remoting in. Are we all good as far as, I mean, it's been kind of a long meeting. Does anybody need a break, or can we push through and do this last action item? Councilmembers? Everyone's okay? Okay. Great.
I'm ready to roll. Because I'm way past my bedtime, and I'm...
Let's welcome Karen and move into this next item.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Connie, the item I have to bring forward to you today is the revision of our personnel policies and procedures. It is extremely outdated. The last revision was in June of 2018, and it was only one item, and that was, excuse me, incentive pay. And so, this document basically is 14 years old, and as you can imagine, there have been updates and changes in negotiations with both the POA as well as IBEW, and numerous changes in the laws. And so, I appreciate that this is a really large document, but it is a document that has been just upgraded with the new policies. We didn't take anything out. We updated with several items, and you can see many where it is, equal opportunity, complaint procedures, recruitment, classification plan, and so on. I worked for a full year with our expertise attorney from IBEW, and I will tell you that it took a full year because there are so many changes that had to be made, and then we had to look to see what the intent would be. And then, I met with, we did a meeting and confer with both the POA and IBEW. Actually, IBEW was, we had numerous meetings over several weeks, because as you can see, it's not a document that you can review or read through from start to finish in one day. There were a lot of changes that we made that we had to incorporate the changes in each of the POAs, and I don't know what that feedback is coming from because there's nothing here, so. But, this document, we refer to it as the PFP. It was enlarged to include the policies and guidelines that the council has already approved. And it is something that is a, it is a requirement through our liability pool and IRMA, which is the Employment Risk Management Authority, that we use when we obviously have situations for, maybe with the HR, would be through lawsuits and so on, and investigations. So, it was quite extensive. The unions don't vote on this policy. They simply, we meet and confer and received feedback, made some changes, and then we came to an agreement with both unions on how to move forward because this is policies that they have to follow in order to be a condition of employment. Again, their updates mainly are with laws that have changed so that we are compliant, and pretty much every city in California has to have them because it's the employee handbook for a different name. I'm interested in what sort of questions that you have in regards to this document. And, I mean, there's, again, it was updated with our legal partners, and it's not really, it's just updating the rules. It's not an interpretation.
Thank you.
And it's best practices, so.
All right. Thank you, Karen. I'm going to open it up to council questions. Jerry.
So, when you say updating the rules, what you're talking about is just incorporating the new laws, not the rules. Is that correct? You're not establishing new rules. You're incorporating the current laws that are in effect. Is that correct? So, you didn't add any new rules yourself. You added basically what's set forth in law.
That is correct. However, this is the repository for our policies. So, the majority of HR policies also were incorporated in this one document, which our sister cities have done as well. In the past, we couldn't, we simply couldn't afford to take this undertaking and update it over that 14-year period. So, you're going to see changes through the negotiations with IBEW and the POA. So you're going to see changes through the negotiations with IBEW and the POA. But any other policies that the city council has already approved were incorporated into this document, so that it is the repository.
Okay, thank you.
Indiana council members, questions? Hearing no further questions, I'm going to open this up and see if we have any members of the public who would like to make comments. Yes, please, come to the podium.
Good evening, council. Tamara Allenies, City of Willets resident. Tonight was my bailiwick. You had water, you had public administration, you had all the things that interest me very much. I've been working with personnel rules of this nature for about 20 years now. I'm a public administration professional. I have a lot of concerns with the document. I had a hard time reading it and recognizing where the changes were. I did, I had to do a comparison inside Adobe to kind of find the differences. But one of the differences that I just, I don't think is a legal or procedural requirement, and I didn't get a lot of clarification from the staff report, was in the very beginning of your new document, there is a statement that takes some of the responsibility that is put on to the city manager and puts that on to your human resources manager. And, you know, I'm not going to drag in the mud about some of the things that I know the public knows are going on with your employees, but I don't think that it's necessarily the greatest and best time to make some of these changes to your policies when some of these big issues are facing your hiring and firings. I hadn't heard that the, both bargaining agencies were cool with the agreement. I think it'd be great if that was in the staff report, and anything that came from them that said that, because that does seem to be a big, important part of it. And then lastly, I think the public should be able to have a clean version of it to look at that's not all marked up. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, Mayor, Tamara, thank you. I did submit for my agenda summary, the clean version along with the revised, so if you could see the tracking of the changes. It is very difficult because it is so locked, it is a large area. I'm not familiar with what you speak with items taken away from the city manager and placed on HR. Those, I mean, if there is, I'd have to, you'd have to share those with me.
I think what she might be referring to is the last sentence in Section 1.1 that says, "A city manager may delegate the responsibility of assisting in the administration of these policies to the human resources manager to perform personnel actions." So the city manager would have that authority to delegate certain things.
Right. And I manage the, as the HR manager, I manage the hiring process. However, Brian is the appointing authority. Only he can approve an employee to be hired or fired.
Karen, you mentioned that you submitted both the clean document and the marked up document for the staff report, with the staff report?
I did.
I don't know if any of us got that. I think we all only got the marked up document, and it was difficult to read.
I could understand that. I don't know why they were both not submitted to you, but I did submit it, and I will be glad to send it out tonight as well. And then Larry will have to deliver your clean version of the copy. And going through the book, when you remove the tracking it provides you with the language, I did find an error when the tracking was removed of the changes. So on page 66, you don't have it, but this speaks to sick leave on separation from employee. It removed the 30% payout for employees with five years of continuous service, so that has to be updated. But I will update that, and then I will send it out to you, so that you have the ability to review it. Again, I know it's important to understand it. Again, the changes are mainly due to changes in the law. So the other items, unless, like I spoke to, if we negotiated with IBEW or POA, it's not that we wrote it to be specific to whatever union was negotiated, but not everybody negotiates for the same language or the same item. So whenever we had a discrepancy between the two unions, then it would say applicable MOU.
Thank you. I believe we have another member of the public who would like to speak. Come on up.
If it's possible, oh, Nicole Carbo, if it's possible at all, I would like you guys to consider to move that to the next council meeting, because I believe the IBEW did not have a chance to go over the final. The last time, I believe, we met on August 7th, and I don't think we met afterwards to go over the final changes.
Thank you.
Actually, I met, actually, I met with Kim, numerous times where Nikki was not in attendance. And yes, she did, they did receive the final version, and along with the redacted version. And Kim is the business representative for IBEW. And again, we're looking for a meet and confer, we're looking for their input. They provided a lot of input, which was incorporated into this document. So again, part of this revision, not only because it is severely outdated, but it is a requirement of IRMA, which is our Employee Risk Management Authority. And in the event that the city council does not approve this, we will be at risk for liability. And so, you know, I...
Can I ask a question?
Understand that particular... Yes, ma'am.
I'm a little concerned, because you said that we would be liable, but yet it's taken a year to put this document together. And for me, that feels like a little bit of pressure. And I was already thinking in my head that considering, I had talked to Larry today, and we were talking about the, how much information there was to read in this document and think about the ramifications. But, you know, we were talking about how it would have been nice to have a little bit more time. And so I was, I had intended to ask this evening if we could just get an introduction and then, and then take the next step at the next meeting, just because it's such a large document. I feel like I need a little more time, and I got the sense that maybe one of my other fellow council members might want a little more time. And then there were a few questions that were raised, you know, to give us a little opportunity to look into those. That's my thoughts.
Can I just explain? I don't think Karen hit the high notes on this aspect of this project. Yes, it had a pretty much a quick turnaround. We were expecting this document within about three to four months. And we were at the mercy of the attorneys working with LCW. And next thing you know, one thing led to another, one thing led to another. It wasn't as seamless as we were expecting. And so there's a couple of players in this whole process. So you have LCW, who is, who took on the task of updating our document. Then you have IRMA, who is saying, hey, you know, we need to get this going, we need to have this in place. And then at the end of the day, you have our insurance trust, CIRIS/Remif, who is also pushing for this adoption. And we have extended, asked for deadlines, extensions for the last probably two and a half months to get all the comments and get the meet and confers done and get the comments incorporated into the document as is. We're batting up against a deadline, and I did ask Karen yesterday, did you get any feedback or any acknowledgement about an extension of a deadline? So, she's not there, froze up. I didn't get confirmation of that, so, before the meeting.
So I guess I would like to hear if there was any wiggle room in the deadline. I also felt like this was too much to digest, and especially in this format. I would have preferred to see a clean document and not have to wade through the strikeouts. So I'd like to know if that's an option, if we can have another two weeks to digest this.
Can I mention, though, back on August 24th, I did email...
You did ask us if we wanted a clean copy.
And there was a clean copy in that August 24th email, when I emailed it to all the council members, and I did deliver it at the time.
I'm sorry, at the time. It looks like she disconnected, it wasn't us that was frozen.
Can she allow it to get back?
We've had a lot of, I'll be honest, as council members, we've had a lot going on. We've had a lot of community questions and information and feedback. And although we, you know, you did give us that document back on the 24th, I'll be honest, it wasn't a priority. There were other things that were going on that were important. I glanced through the document, and then council member Shranzki and I talked about it yesterday, about, you know, how was it going, did you have questions? And, you know, I said I didn't see anything that looked like that was outside the ordinary. But at the same time, in all honesty, I didn't give it maybe the full attention that it deserved. And so if there's a wiggle room in the timeline, I'd like that opportunity to make sure that if somebody asked me a question about the policy, I know the answer and that I didn't inadvertently approve something.
She's going to call in. She's going to ask consequences. But I just... Check on the link on the email, but I think she's telling the public for internet.
Could she call in on the speaker?
That's what we're trying to do.
I'm going to send her the call in.
You got to make that. You got to call, Mike.
Have you filled, Larry? Did you feel like you got through it all?
Yeah, no, I read through it, and there is 51 changes in that red letters that are in this document. And to put it all together was just mind-boggling, I can tell you that. And I have, I have probably two and a half days, not a sitting down and just reading it, but two and a half days of just trying to go through it and figure it out.
Karen, are you available?
Yes, I am available. I'm sorry, we're having trouble with the internet, it's a little chat.
All right, Karen, simple question. Did you get confirmation of, did you receive the ability to extend the deadline?
No.
No extension?
No, I did not get confirmation.
What happens if we do table it tonight? What happens if we table it?
If we do not get it approved, then it goes, then we're, and we're not granted another extension, then we will not be able to participate in IRMA.
What's our deadline date?
I think it's tomorrow. Is it?
15th. It's the 15th, Friday. So, you know, again, I apologize, I did submit the clean copy. You know, divorce is showing that she sent those out three weeks ago, so everybody had a chance. But I do understand your hesitation, because it is a lot to go through. I will make myself available to answer questions and go through them with you. But again, I will, I will see if we can have it brought to the first meeting in October.
I had a thought.
What?
I think everyone's having doubts about this.
Is it next week?
Is it possible, is it possible that since we're on such a deadline, that we would, that we would approve the personnel policy for a certain period of time, so that you would be in compliance, but also allow the council the time to finish reading through the document and then extend, reaffirm that we agree to this in an unwavering manner?
That is, I was talking to Jim, I think that's a strategy that we would like to propose to the council, that you move ahead with approval with a condition that maybe within three months, that you have enough time to go through it, we'll get you clean copies, and...
I'll do it before you burn it.
I'm recognizing what I've heard, that council has other commitments. I'm trying to put this out there in enough time, so you have adequate opportunity to review the document, ask staff, ask myself, ask Karen, what about the unique provisions and where the changes are? And then at that three, within that three-month period, we'll have final approval.
Could we, could we change that to two weeks? Does council...
We could, sure.
I think two weeks would be sufficient.
I was being generous.
It's very kind of you, but I think we can get this done in two weeks.
Why don't we just say 30 days, and then you put it on the next agenda, and we'll be good.
The only thing I would add is, I would also like at that next meeting, that we have confirmation that, from some sort of acknowledgement, that there was meet and confer, so that...
There were a meeting.
I believe you, I don't, I don't think, meet and confer is not the same thing for those out in the public. It doesn't mean we voted and agreed. It just means we had an opportunity to review it, you know, and voice our concerns.
We met. Okay, so we did meet and confer with the POA. They had one meeting, they asked three questions. IBEW, we had numerous meetings over several weeks. I worked with Kim Conani, the business representative. So the, she did supply alternate language in some of the cases that we accepted, others we declined, because, again, this is a document that is for all employee managers, not for IBEW. So, you know, there are some things they didn't like the language on, but understood. We are meeting and concerning, we are not required to obtain their approval, they don't vote on it as a membership. But I will tell you that it ended very well today, and she was happy that, you know, we listened to their concern and accepted many of them. So when you say that you want to get confirmation, what is it that you would like to see in a way of confirmation?
Well, Karen, I have somebody here today that's saying that there was no final draft, so I'd be satisfied if at the next meeting you...
She wasn't in the meeting.
Yeah.
She wasn't in the meeting.
Oh, I get it. I get it, Karen, I just, by the time you come back at the next meeting, I'm sure you will have spoken again or confirmed with Kim this, hey, yeah, you, you know, or an email or something, that's fine. I'm not trying to make, again, I just want to make it out there, so the public knows we did confer with our employee groups that, and again, they don't have a right to vote and give us their final approval. They have a right to review it and give their comments. And the same thing happens with the police department and the Lexapro policies. The POA has an opportunity to meet and confer, and then ultimately, a lot of these changes are just law things, so.
So here's what I need to do. I will go back to IRMA and SEDWIC and ask them for an extension, but I've heard different time periods, two weeks, 30 days. So as it were for us to meet the deadline of the 15th, we will have to have a resolution that will have to be, you know, tailored to have it for a short period of time. But again, I did ask for an extension in case, you know, this wasn't approved today due to concerns and questions. So I'd like to follow through with that first, but I would like to settle on how, you know, what the timeframe is that you would like to see.
I think the consensus is 30 days.
30 days, okay.
Yes, that has a question.
So then we will bring it back.
Karen, Madge has one question, please.
Karen, I want to make a motion, please. I would like to move that we approve the document as presented this evening with the, with the provision that within 30 days, we can revisit and consider any possible changes, so, but that we adopted tonight.
And I'll second that.
Within the deadline.
We, we have heard from, from you. We understand.
We only need to have a final, because we never received a final.
I'm sorry, could I, could I, I didn't get to hear what Nikki said.
Karen, you're fine. Karen, we're fine. We have a motion on the table.
Okay, so.
I did hear.
We have a motion and a second to conditionally approve this, to keep the city in compliance, with the understanding that the council will use this next 30 days to review the personnel policy in completion and have the opportunity to discuss further questions with the human resources manager. Okay? That's what's on the table. May we have a roll call, please?
Well, I think you need some public comment.
Okay.
My name's Dustin Fedusi. I'm a civil engineer in Mendocino County here. I own a small business in Willets. I reviewed many of these employee policies. And I think with the climate of the way things are, I'd be prudent to add a conflict of interest section, kind of avoiding any sort of potential conflicts of interest between, you know, future hires and, you know, staff. So just want to put that out for the record, that, you know, it's pretty common that conflict of interest would be addressed in these sort of employee manuals. So I think it's, you know, something that should be added to protect the city.
Thank you very much.
And I would agree with that conversation that some of us have had when it comes to the personnel policy. So we would like to see that, so I'll make note of looking for that section.
And it does exist within the city council's procedures policy, so it would make sense it would be an employee policy as well. Okay. And Nikki, did you have further comment, or was your, okay, all right. So just for the record, the comment from Ms. Caldwell was that the IBW did not get a final draft of the proposed policy. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. We have heard public comment. We have a motion and a second.
Who gave the second, please?
I'm Jerry.
Thank you. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yeah.
Solis?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes. Thank you.
If we hadn't known, we might have wanted to break.
Thank you, Karen. All right, so that is the end of the evening's action items. We have no department monthly reports. We'll move on to item 11, which is the city council announcements, communications, and reports. Madge.
Tomorrow, I have two meetings. One is in the morning is the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority. The one item there that I think is of definite interest. I just had a hazmat wheel event last weekend, which I didn't know about in advance. The next one is on November 3rd and 4th in Willets at 350 Front Avenue. And there's various things you can bring to those, like motor oil, antifreeze, gasoline solvents, paint cleaners, paint, et cetera, acids, pesticides, herbicides. You cannot bring explosives, ammunition, radioactive waste, et cetera. So that's going to be November 3rd and 4th. And other than that, there was very little information in the packet for tomorrow morning's meeting. I am still asking, have every opportunity, to understand what the budget is and what the actual implementation of this new system where we have the private company providing the hazardous waste services. Hoping that I will learn more tomorrow morning. And then in the afternoon tomorrow is a economic development and financing corporation meeting. Most of it is performance stuff, going through the loans and, and how that's going. Two, the two board representatives are no longer going to be serving on the EDFC board. So they're changing the bylaws, they're changing the quorum requirements. And I'm kind of disappointed that we don't have board of supervisor representation on the EDFC. But it's, so it is a kind of a significant meeting in rearranging that, some of the procedures. That's tomorrow at 2:00, which will take place in Ukiah at their office, but I'm gonna attend by super.
Thank you.
I think it's good that EDFC is removing two board positions. That board, in my opinion, is way too big, which causes some of the effectiveness. So hopefully that will help, help them be a little bit more effective in the board. How many are on the board? 20?
It was about 15, but...
15. That's a very large board.
It is, it is.
Mendocino, Trions, and I'm Laura. We've got two weeks ago, the conversation revolved around two topics. One is the shortfall of the money that we were expecting from the county for transportation and trying to continue to develop a plan to create a soft landing as we struggle with that loss. And then the other big one is the transit center. We received a presentation on potential sites for where the transit center might be and came to a conclusion that we needed a boots-on-the-ground tour. So the plan is in two weeks, which would be the last Wednesday of this month at 1:30. Well, the first location hasn't been set, but we'll be walking to three different sites in Ukiah and discussing the merits of each of the sites. The two sites that seem to be the leaders for potential locations are on the north side of Poles, in that empty space that's there. And then the other one is on Mason Street. And the reason that that one is appealing is it's near the library, the rest of trails, where the Newport House will go, and then the hospital facilities. So there's a little bit of debate about whether or not it should be closer to those type of, of, um, public facilities, or whether shopping is a, is a larger value. And when the public weighed in, the public leaned towards shopping. So, yeah, we're, so the board is torn over what we're going to support. Unfortunately, there wasn't a clear consensus among our board of which project we wanted to support. NAMCOG is waiting for that information from us. And so hopefully, getting a boots-on-the-ground tour will help us all come to collectively to the decision what we can send on in unanimous. This is what we think is best as well. And I hope that it's, my hope is that it's in line with what the public wants. But we'll see. Maybe we'll find some new information that maybe the public just hadn't thought of and have some wiser logic, although I don't know about that. We'll see. And then I just want to say that I'm happy to hear about the festival, the hometown festival, how it's going to be growing and how the last one went near the 4th of July, that community spirit. And I love seeing new events coming back since we're in, since things slowed down so much during COVID. We had the music festival. I didn't attend it, but I heard lots of good things from people who did, how excited and how it made them feel a part of the community and what it's nice to have. And then this last weekend, Roots of Power Volunteers really put on a nice presentation there with some history. And I was speaking to one of the members who works really hard to put that on. And they were stating how because Willetts use soccer, was also hosting our opening day event, which we often do at the same time, it brings in a whole younger generation, you know, and their minds are thinking about, you know, what, what, how hard things were and how good, how easy they have them today. It just, it just was a really good experience and slicing people out, mingling together, and just feeling like Willetts community. And that's how I have it.
Larry?
None.
Jerry?
Might be quick. Monday, I went to LAPCO and the matters that were on there with city, Ukiah annexation of city-owned property. They've got a couple of tracts of land near their sewer and some on the west side and some on the east side, and they're all city-owned pieces of property. And it's one of the first annexations in that valley in a long time. So we gave it our blessing from LAPCO, and it's moving on to the next stage.
It is big.
And the only other thing I have is that next week, I'll be at the League of Cities in San Antonio.
Thank you. Mine will be brief as well. Last week, I attended the museum advisory board meeting. The big news is that the museum curator, our local Karen Matson, just completed her master's degree in museum sciences. That's a huge accomplishment for her while also working full-time as our museum curator. So we're very proud of her. And also, the director of the museum, Debbie Deb Sampson, is actually leaving the county. She is moving back to Ohio to take care of her aging parents. We're very sorry to lose her. She's been a true advocate and friend of the museum and the library, and she will be a loss to our community, but we wish her well. And then finally, the board agreed to move forward on creation of a land acknowledgement. So in the near future, the museum will be issuing on all of their documentation and a welcome to the museum, the acknowledgement of the land that the museum rests on and who were the original occupant. So the board is excited about that and looking forward to crafting the right language. And then this morning, as Councilwoman Rodriguez stated, we attended the Measure K committee meeting, got some really good feedback from our community members who also serve on the board with some direction towards how Measure K funds will be spent. It was a productive and nuanced discussion that I enjoyed. So that's it for my report. Does anyone have any good in welfare? I feel like Suprina kind of gave some, and earlier, we heard the good news about Ms., can you remember her name? It's been a long meeting. Our COVLO astronaut. Mann, thank you. Yes, yes, yes. And I also just wanted to echo that the Roots Steam Up and Barbecue was a great event, a lot of community participation. I helped serve and over 400 people ate barbecue on Saturday. It was really fun. No closed session tonight, so at... Yeah.
I'm sorry, but I recall that it was mentioned at our previous meeting, somewhat in response to the POA statement, that we might want to consider having a closed session. And I believe it would be a personnel matter of reviewing our city manager's, how he is handling the situation that we have. And I think it would be a good idea to do that. It's not a performance evaluation. It's not in lieu of that. It's just so that we all would have a chance to hear directly how our city manager and how we feel or any questions we have, because we can't deal with personnel matters in, in public session. And I think it would be a really thing to do. And I would like to request that we do that next time, next two weeks from now.
Okay. Do I understand that there's support for that?
I would agree.
Okay. So may we put that on the next council agenda with the attendance of our city attorney present?
Yes, it's possible, but I may not be able to be here at your next meeting. So I'll know, I'll know about that tomorrow. So if it's not going to be, it's just not. My wife has plans to go someplace, so...
They were on and they were off, so we thought we were clear. Meeting up to the...
Her day, she believes these plans are still on, so I may not be available on the 27th. I could be available by phone. Yeah, just like to clarify, at the last meeting, Councilmember Strong made the suggestion of a closed session meeting. And at that time, I discouraged it because I didn't think it was something that was within your jurisdiction to review if it was a personnel decision made by your manager regarding employees that he supervises, and he's, and that's part of his scope of duties. And also, the presenter made several comments regarding potential liability and potential litigation that could arise because of those actions that were taken. And I didn't think those comments rose to the level of a threat of actual litigation that justifies a closed session meeting. And it didn't occur to me at the meeting that the government code also allows the city council, of course, to assess and review the city manager in closed session. So you do have this authority under the government code, and I think as well as the Willetts Municipal Code to have this closed session.
Without any violation of the Brown Act?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. So that will be on our next agenda at close session. Thank you. There is no closed session tonight, so at 9:35 PM, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all for being here.